... I have to get the oxygen. I'm glad we have another, uh, player up. He's got three days. And he's like, oh, he's a little late. He's like, oh, he's a little late. And he's telling me, he's like, he's trying to tell me to come back. And I'm like, no. He's like, oh, yeah. And then I'm pointing at the train. And he's like, oh, yeah. And I'm like, oh, yeah. And he's like, oh, yeah. Well, he's got enough things to run through now. But the truth is, he's seen it. He comes after it. He's like, oh, yeah. Come back and go. Go. He's like, oh, yeah. So he has a little guy that, you know, he's like, oh, yeah. And he thinks he's celebrating. You know, Alan's like, oh, yeah. He's 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 like, oh, yeah. Bro, I will bring him down.
Well, you might expect we had a lot of personal matters, so we're sorry about that, but we're here now, so we're ready to get going. So I would like to reconvene in open session. Um, so do we have a motion to do exactly that?
Motion to convene in open session.
I move to reconvene in open session.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Gutshahl, thank you, Mr. Street for seconding. All in favor of reconvening in open session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? None? Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to read the following statement from our closed meeting. The certification. The Shenandoah County School Board hereby certifies by roll call vote, yep, I'm sorry, I'll get this in, hold on a second. By roll call vote, that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, considered by the Shenandoah County School Board. Each member responds iso-certify when called. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Street.
Iso-certify.
Ms. Carlenio.
Iso-certify.
Mr. Gutshahl.
Iso-certify.
Ms. Rutz.
Iso-certify.
Mr. Rickert.
Iso-certify.
And Mr. Barlow.
Iso-certify. And now I would like to call on Mrs. Rutz for the invocation and the pledge.
Please bow your head. Compassionate and gracious God, all tribes and tongues will one day acknowledge Jesus as Lord. Alongside this, we know the truth proclaimed in your word, that we are all created in your image. Too easily, we allow division based culture, language, and/or race change our behavior. Please change our behavior and make us united. Let us focus on our shared status as your creation and unite together over what we have in common, not fracture over how we differ. To you, Creator of all people, I pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, at this point, could I have a motion to approve the agenda as it has been presented?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Carlenio. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to read the following statement from our closed meeting. The certification. The Shenandoah County School Board hereby certifies by roll call vote, yep, I'm sorry, I'll get this in, hold on a second. By roll call vote, that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, considered by the Shenandoah County School Board. Each member responds iso-certify when called. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Street.
Iso-certify.
Ms. Carlenio.
Iso-certify.
Mr. Gutshahl.
Iso-certify.
Ms. Rutz.
Iso-certify.
Mr. Rickert.
Iso-certify.
And Mr. Barlow.
Iso-certify. And now I would like to call on Mrs. Rutz for the invocation and the pledge.
Please bow your head. Compassionate and gracious God, all tribes and tongues will one day acknowledge Jesus as Lord. Alongside this, we know the truth proclaimed in your word, that we are all created in your image. Too easily, we allow division based culture, language, and/or race change our behavior. Please change our behavior and make us united. Let us focus on our shared status as your creation and unite together over what we have in common, not fracture over how we differ. To you, Creator of all people, I pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, at this point, could I have a motion to approve the agenda as it has been presented?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Carlenio. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. At this point, I'd like to turn the program over to Superintendent for recognitions.
Thank you. This evening, I'd like to recognize Mr. Scott Schlentner from Signal Knob Middle School.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Shepherd. I do want to thank you for having this opportunity to come before you again to talk about one of my staff members. But before I turn the mic over to him, because he is one being recognized, I do want to thank you for, as we come to a close for National Teacher Week, that the support that you give is vital for us every day to work with the students that we work with and have the pleasure of working with every day. So I personally want to say thank you to each and every one of you. At this time, I had the great opportunity of introducing Dakota Stroud and the one of the accomplishments you'll be hearing about more later on, but for this moment, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stroud.
Thank you, Mr. Schlentner, and good evening, Shenandoah County Public School Board, Dr. Shepherd, and Central Office staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, and I want to express my gratitude for the continued support you provide to our educators in our district, particularly in the area of professional development. Your commitment to our growth as teachers and leaders is truly invaluable. As many of you are already aware, I was recently awarded the 2024 Virginia Association of Agricultural Educators Teachers Turn the Key Professional Development Scholarship Award. This recognition from the Virginia Association of Agricultural Educators means a great deal to me, as it validates the hard work we've put into our agricultural education program at Signal Knob Middle School. With this award, I will have the privilege of attending the National Association of Agricultural Education Conference in San Antonio, Texas this December. This conference offers a fantastic opportunity to engage in professional development activities with other early career teachers from across the country. I'm looking forward to bringing back new insights and strategies to benefit our students and our program. This accomplishment would not have been possible without the support of our school community and your belief in the value of quality agricultural education. Thank you for your continued encouragement and providing the resources we need to excel. I am grateful to represent our division at this national conference, and I look forward to sharing what I learn with you and our school community. Once again, thank you for your continued support.
All right, the next, yeah, the next thing that we're going to do is something we value very highly, which is to hear public and staff comments on agenda items and non-agenda items. So I'm going to read what I always read about the way we conduct this, and I'm going to make a few extra comments because we've made some slight variations. So I want to indicate that the Shenandoah County School Board does welcome comment, public comment during most regular meetings and during public hearings. School Board members do not respond to public comments during the meeting or hearing. Each speaker may speak up to two minutes tonight. We usually do three. We had to throttle back to two because of the number of speakers we have. We've made that known, and we regret it, but it's necessary. The board generally allows up to thirty minutes, but we're going to, I'm sure, go well beyond that tonight, and that's just fine. There are a large number of speakers. As I said, we have reduced the total number of minutes you can speak to, two. I'll be kind of very legalistic about that, but I'll give you a few extra seconds to finish up, but I hope you stay on time, so I don't have to do that. All comments should address a matter related to the Shenandoah County Public Schools. Complaints regarding division and polioe should be directed to the school principal or an appropriate school division official. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. Speakers will address their comments to the entire school board and not to one individual school board member, to the superintendent, to a staff member, nor to the audience. Speakers will not engage in personal attacks. Speakers may sign up still to speak at the school board meeting tonight, and the document has been provided by the clerk of the school board. We've asked that you fill out that information as precisely as you can, since it goes as part of the public record, and your name may be forwarded with your comments to journalists or whoever else wants to use them. At the end of that time, I'm not going to allow any further people to sign up, but along the way, if you would like to do so, you can continue to go over there. I see that the, that the sheets have been filled out, it looks like, very properly. That's good. If you don't have specific information on there, please put that on there between now and then. It looks like we have a good, a good number of speakers, and that you've all signed up very well, so thank you for that. I am asking you not to make comments or any kind of public display while the speaker is speaking. I think that's, that's only courtesy no matter who's speaking, and I think if we follow that, it would be a, a night filled with, with good decorum and a good speechifying, so I hope that's where we go. If a speaker liked to present written comments, the school board, eight copies should be provided to the school board clerk as is necessary. So, with that, we go down the list in the order that they were given to us, so when I call your name, please move to the podium, and you will have your, your two minutes. The first name I have is Bo Dickinson.
Good evening, Chairman Barlow, Superintendent Shepherd, members of the board. My name is Bo Dickinson, and I'm speaking as a private citizen on behalf of no one other than myself. I actually started my career in education over twenty years ago at Stonewall Jackson High School. As an American history teacher,
The Shenandoah County School Board hereby certifies by roll call vote. Yep, I'm sorry, I'll get this in. By roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, considered by the Shenandoah County School Board. Each member responds ISO certify when called. A roll call vote, please.
Mr. Street.
ISO certify.
Ms. Carlinio.
ISO certify.
Mr. Gutschall.
ISO certify.
Ms. Rutz.
ISO certify.
Mr. Rickert.
ISO certify.
And Mr. Barlow.
ISO certify. And now I would like to call on Mrs. Rutz for the invocation and the pledge.
Please bow your head. Compassionate and gracious God, all tribes and tongues will one day acknowledge Jesus as Lord. Alongside this, we know the truth proclaimed in your word, that we are all created in your image. Too easily, we allow division based culture, language, and/or race change our behavior. Please change our behavior and make us united. Let us focus on our shared status as your creation and unite together over what we have in common, not fracture over how we differ. To you, Creator of all people, I pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, could I have a motion to approve the agenda as it has been presented?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Carlinio. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. At this point, I'd like to turn the program over to Superintendent for recognitions.
Thank you. This evening, I'd like to recognize Mr. Scott Schlentner from Signal Knob Middle School.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Shepherd. I do want to thank you for having this opportunity to come before you again to talk about one of my staff members. But before I turn the mic over to him, because he is one being recognized, I do want to thank you for, as we come to a close for National Teacher Week, that the support that you give is vital for us every day to work with the students that we work with and have the pleasure of working with every day. So I personally want to say thank you to each and every one of you. At this time, I had the great opportunity of introducing Dakota Stroud and one of the accomplishments you'll be hearing about more later on, but for this moment, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stroud.
Thank you, Mr. Schlentner, and good evening, Shenandoah County Public School School Board, Dr. Shepherd, and Central Office staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, and I want to express my gratitude for the continued support you provide to our educators in our district, particularly in the area of professional development. Your commitment to our growth as teachers and leaders is truly invaluable. As many of you are already aware, I was recently awarded the 2024 Virginia Association of Agricultural Educators Teachers Turn the Key Professional Development Scholarship Award. This recognition from the Virginia Association of Agricultural Educators means a great deal to me, as it validates the hard work we've put into our agricultural education program at Signal Knob Middle School. With this award, I will have the privilege of attending the National Association of Agricultural Education Conference in San Antonio, Texas this December. This conference offers a fantastic opportunity to engage in professional development activities with other early career teachers from across the country. I'm looking forward to bringing back new insights and strategies to benefit our students and our program. This accomplishment would not have been possible without the support of our school community and your belief in the value of quality agricultural education. Thank you for your continued encouragement and providing the resources we need to excel. I am grateful to represent our division at this national conference, and I look forward to sharing what I learn with you and our school community. Once again, thank you for your continued support.
All right, the next, yeah. The next thing that we're going to do is something we value very highly, which is to hear public and staff comments on agenda items and non-agenda items. So I'm going to read what I always read about the way we conduct this, and I'm going to make a few extra comments because we've made some slight variations. So I want to indicate that the Shenandoah County School Board does welcome comment, public comment during most regular meetings and during public hearings. School Board members do not respond to public comments during the meeting or hearing. Each speaker may speak up to two minutes tonight. We usually do three. We had to throttle back to two because of the number of speakers we have. We've made that known, and we regret it, but it's necessary. The board generally allows up to 30 minutes, but we're going to, I'm sure, go well beyond that tonight, and that's just fine. There are a large number of speakers. As I said, we have reduced the total number of minutes you can speak to. I'll be kind of very legalistic about that, but I'll give you a few extra seconds to finish up, but I hope you stay on time so I don't have to do that. All comments should address a matter related to the Shenandoah County Public Schools. Complaints regarding division and polioe should be directed to the school principal or an appropriate school division official. The School Board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. Speakers will address their comments to the entire School Board and not to one individual School Board member, to the superintendent, to a staff member, nor to the audience. Speakers will not engage in personal attacks. Speakers may sign up still to speak at the School Board meeting tonight, and the document has been provided by the clerk of the School Board. We've asked that you fill out that information as precisely as you can, since it goes as part of the public record, and your name may be forwarded with your comments to journalists or whoever else wants to use them. At the end of that time, I'm not going to allow any further people to sign up, but along the way, if you would like to do so, you can continue to go over there. I see that the sheets have been filled out, it looks like, very properly. That's good. If you don't have specific information on there, please put that on there between now and then. It looks like we have a good number of speakers and that you've all signed up very well, so thank you for that. I'm asking you not to make comments or any kind of public display while the speaker is speaking. I think that's only courtesy no matter who's speaking, and I think if we follow that, it would be a night filled with good decorum and good speechifying, so I hope that's where we go. If a speaker liked to present written comments, the School Board, eight copies should be provided to the School Board clerk as is necessary. So with that, we go down the list in the order that they were given to us, so when I call your name, please move to the podium, and you will have your two minutes. The first name I have is Beau Dickinson.
Good evening, Chairman Barlow, Superintendent Shepherd, members of the board. My name is Beau Dickinson, and I'm speaking as a private citizen on behalf of no one other than myself. I actually started my career in education over 20 years ago at Stonewall Jackson High School. As an American history teacher, I realized that most students thought of Stonewall Jackson as a place and as a building as much as they thought about him as a person. And this may be the case for many who remain attached to the Stonewall name. Former graduates are likely proud of their own high school accomplishments and the memories they formed at SJHS. That feeling is quite natural and partially why this debate is so emotional and difficult. However, it is also history itself that makes this difficult, very difficult. Stonewall Jackson High School was named on January 12, 1959, over 95 years after Stonewall Jackson's death in 1863. So why did it take nearly a century to suddenly discover this so-called heritage in the mid 20th century? In 1959, the national news spotlight was centered on Virginia as federal courts issued the first court orders to desegregate public schools. In response, Senator Harry Byrd declared massive resistance to racial integration, and Governor Lindsey Allman forcibly closed schools that attempted to integrate. In fact, the very first school closed by the governor was just a few miles away from here in neighboring Warren County, and I'm actually honored to be here with some of those former student plaintiffs. It was precisely at this very moment that the Shenandoah County School Board chose to name its new high school after a Confederate general who fought in the defense of slavery and states' rights. If you vote to restore the name of Stonewall Jackson in 2024, you will be resurrecting an act of 1959 that is forever rooted in massive resistance and Jim Crow segregation.
Mr. Dickinson, your time is over. You have five seconds to finish up. Hannah Keen.
I'll begin with pointing out the irony in why a lot of us are here tonight. Some people in the county feel that the initial name change stripped them of their democratic processes while advocating for the honoring of an individual that stripped African-Americans of their democratic rights. 13% of the surveys sent out by the Coalition for Better Schools were returned. That hardly sounds like the majority to me. Not even the entire 13% that were returned pushed for the names to be restored. That's about 7,347 opinions that are completely unaccounted for. Let's go back to 1954, Brown versus Board of Education, where it was ruled that separate is not equal. 1956, Virginia adopts a massive resistance policy to block the integration of public schools. In 1959, SCPS constructed the Southern Campus, and conveniently, in 1960, in the height of massive resistance in Virginia, it was formally dedicated as Stonewall Jackson High School. Shenandoah County Public Schools didn't fully integrate until 1964, 10 years after Brown versus Board, and two years after the NAACP filed a lawsuit for an African-American student to attend Central High School. This was the historical climate when these schools were named, and this is what that name represents. In the times when this school was named, it would have been illegal for my husband and I to get married, my husband who works tirelessly to ensure the safety of this county's people as a deputy at the sheriff's office. Regardless of the decision that's made, history will be made in this building tonight, and the fact that we are here having this conversation is an absolute travesty to Shenandoah County. The restoration of this name is going to set us back 70 years, and my heart breaks for the children that are going to have to walk into schools named after people that wanted them and their families enslaved by the white man. I urge the School Board to make the right choice and uphold these names.
Carol Kidwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is Carol Kidwell, and I am a concerned Virginia resident and member of the NAACP of Winchester City, Frederick, Warren, and Clark Counties. In 1954, our courts gave us the landmark Brown versus Board of Education decision, which said maintaining racial segregated schools was unconstitutional. Almost immediately, our federal government began supporting black students, integrated the segregated schools, and gave a voice to civil rights leaders. And in response to that, white supremacists across the South were not about to let our beautiful little black children ever forget their place. So between 1954 and 1970, at least 45 new schools from Virginia to Florida were named after Confederate generals and soldiers. In 1959, Shenandoah County, Virginia, built their own reminder to black students, Stonewall Jackson High School, and that preserved bigotry over history. When those of us who believe in equality of all hear your excuses that you have attachments to the school because you attended that school or because your children attended that school, it's not that we don't understand how you feel about your mom and mother, it's because it pales in comparison to what it means to a black American to have a daily reminder that this school honors a man who fought to enforce the pain and suffering of an entire race of Americans who were hunted down, taken from their native lands and culture, torn from their families, enforced into the inhumane enslavement. As School Board members, you have a duty to do what is right and choose school names that all children can be proud of.
Gene Kilby.
Good evening. My name is Gene Kilby. I'm the last surviving son of James Wilson Kilby, one of the individuals that was very instrumental in desegregating schools in Virginia. I stand before you tonight to continue to fight the same battle that has been fought repeatedly, over and over again. I stand before you tonight on the shoulders of those who came before me. I stand before you tonight on the pledge of this county that this county made in 1964 to support civil rights. I stand before you tonight on the resolution against racism adopted by Shenandoah County School Board in June of 2020. Were these just gestures at that time, or did the School Board really mean it? Why are we here tonight? To go back to a time in history that was very cruel, where hatred and racism continued throughout this county and throughout the United States? My experience with the Confederate sympathizers was in, my first experience with Confederate sympathizers was in the year of 1958. I was seven years old. They poisoned the family dog, shot through our home, mutilated our livestock, and left bloody sheeps on the mailbox. Is this the type of legacy that you want to put in Shenandoah County's public school buildings? The Civil War was fought and lost by the Confederacy. Do you want to continue to memorialize individuals that led an insurrection against the United States?
Mr. Kilby, your time is up. Take five seconds if you have.
We don't need to go backwards. We just ask you tonight to do the right thing.
Is it Suetta Freeman? Is that the way it's pronounced?
Good evening, board members. My name is Suetta Freeman, and I reside at 74 Michella Road in Front Royal, Virginia. My, I, I was one of the original 21.
Ms. Suetta, if you could, yeah.
I was one of the original 21 that walked up the hill to Warren County High School in Front Royal, Virginia, with past hecklers and policemen on February 18, 1959. This day will be forever etched in my mind. The insults hurled at us was almost unbearable. This was one of the worst demonstrations of hatred and racism I have ever experienced. Our parents only wanted our children to get a quality education at the school where they, where they paid their taxes. Afro-American students in Warren County would have to travel numerous miles out of town to locations in order to get an education. We walked up that hill in Warren County almost five years after Brown versus Board of Education in Topeka, Kansas. State-sanctioned segregation of public schools was a violation of the 14th Amendment and was therefore unconstitutional. Virginia was a state that opposed integration and did not care what the courts had mandated. Massive resistance was a terrible time in the state and our communities. Confederate sympathizers led the charge to further divide our communities, and then it continued to raise its hateful head today. Frankly speaking, slavery was wrong, and we don't want to continue to be reminded of these atrocities. Naming public buildings after Confederate soldiers is a slap in the face for civil rights. I ask you tonight for the board to vote to keep the current name of the schools. Thank you.
Bill Scott.
Good evening, members of the School Board.
Good evening.
First of all, this is one final chance to decide whether Shenandoah County is going to maintain names that are non-controversial, names that will remain non-controversial. Nobody needs to argue about the name Mountain View or Honey Run. Chances are, at some point, if these names are reversed, they will be reversed again, okay? The basis for the Confederacy is best spelled out in the cornerstone speech of Alexander Stevens, Vice President of the Confederacy. He made it very clear that secession and their purpose was to maintain what they said was the view that black people were inferior and were destined to live in slavery. Robert E. Lee believed nothing less. Stonewall Jackson, we don't have too many statements from him on it, but we know what he fought for. Turner Ashby led a mob raiding the home of an anti-slavery plantation owner in Clark County. Okay, these are things that this heritage, as we call it, are about. I understand sentimental attachments. I went Central. Fortunately, that name is never going to be argued about either. But the thing is, people talk about generals. You can still be generals, Mountain View generals, okay? If people are attached to that name, that's already there. But do we want to be remembered as the county that reversed these names to bring back this horrible history and celebrate slavery and those who fought for it? Or do we wish to maintain names and be in the 21st century? Thank you.
Virginia Rosen. Virginia Rosen, she's on the way up.
Well, here we are. On July 9, 2020, there was a School Board meeting. The names were changed, and no one was in the boardroom. Tonight, it's kind of ironic that there's a School Board meeting and none of us are in the boardroom. To me, this is fitting, or what others might call karma. And you know what they say about karma? I'm fed up with people lying about how our schools were named. I think it's really rich when people lecture me about morality, but yet excuse the actions of the 2020 School Board. I don't like the name Mountain View. It's too generic, and it's boring. And Honey Run sounds like the name of a moonshine operation. It's so bad. Thank God we didn't go with the Timber Rattlers. I mean, can you imagine? The 2020 School Board was dishonest. They lied about the funding and violated the rules for Zoom meetings during the plandemic. Of course, they didn't seek reelection. They should have been taking care of students instead of having secret meetings. Yes, you heard that right. The 2020 School Board was secretly meeting with a handful of citizens to plan the name change, while the rest of us were told to mask up, social distance, and stay at home. Rules for thee, but not for me. It's kind of funny hearing some of you call us traitors when we live in a country that was founded by a bunch of traitors. You can't make this stuff up. School Board, thank you for serving. I know it's a thankless job, and the hours are long, and the pay sucks. We've had two election cycles, and the people have spoken. When the address of the school is Stonewall Lane.
Ms. Rosen, your time is up.
Then the name should reflect that. It's time to restore the names. Thank you.
Jerome Russell. I'm sorry. Is it, is it Gene? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello. My name is Jean Russell, and I live in Edinburgh. Four years ago, the former Shenandoah County Board did the right thing, and it was hard because change is hard. And those members were subjected to a lot of ugliness because of their action. So I commend them for taking the harder path because it was the right thing to do. In my mind, the School Board is elected to improve the quality of education. They should work to improve things for students, teachers, and staff in Shenandoah County. I'm not sure that this board has been focused on that. There are real issues in the schools that need to be addressed. It's getting harder to attract and retain good teachers and staff. Morale is low, and the board seems more focused on division. This board seems focused on playing politics which have nothing to do with the job which you were elected to ensure that our students get the best education and opportunities possible. I think you should start focusing on how to make the schools a better place for everyone. The action you're considering does not help the students of this school system. It hurts them, and I believe it will also hurt the county. Do we really want to be known nationwide as the county that wasted so much time and energy to drag itself backwards, to defiantly say to our students that your future is less important than this shameful past? Tonight, you have the opportunity to embrace good change and move forward. I implore you to please do the right thing. Keep the current names and move forward with grace and dignity. You can do it. Thank you.
Erin, is it Walker? Is that right?
Thank you, board members and community members.
Thank you, board members and community members. I am a Strasburg graduate who is currently studying history at Shepherd University. And to follow up with what so many people have brought up, I've already said about the history. I've learned a lot from my history courses. The Civil War just lasted four years. Some Southern history buffs focus on that time while they ignore the other history that followed. After World War I, when black servicemen returned from France, they picked up on the way that they were being mistreated in the South. Hundreds of them were lynched. And the Confederate veterans organizations put up statues to honor their white supremacist heroes. Following every episode of liberation for African-Americans, their white neighbors had a cultural backlash. This is the context that these Confederate names were chosen following Brown v. Board. I ask that, for the sake of historians, teachers, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, students, and the community, that you vote no to keep the names. Thank you.
Isn't it wonderful to see such a huge crowd here tonight? It really is. Half of them believe that we ought to be going back in history and the other half says we need to move forward in history. What should we do? My relatives came here in 1700, settled down in Bedford. They went through the Civil War. Half from the North, half from the South. We're going to honor that period of time that is going to keep us in the past and not let us move forward. And I feel sorry for anybody whose relatives died or fought and they want to honor them. I recognize that. But you can't keep history forcing the next generation to keep having those subconscious memories of war and fighting. I had a conversation here earlier and as I started talking about what I thought, "Oh, you're this," and I said, "I don't want to talk about it anymore." It was a dismissiveness. And that was what was going on back in 1865 as well. I haven't heard anybody here say, "We need to change the name of the school to Abraham Lincoln School." How many here would like to see it be Abraham Lincoln School? Oh, but you see, no, we can't do that kind of stuff. That's, "He was with the North. We got to keep our history here. Our history's more important. Our future's more important, not our history." So I urge you, I urge you. When I went to school, it was in Chicago. My school was considered in 1960s to be the most well-integrated school in the entire country. The mass media was in on the school for anything that went on. And I learned back then that you can coexist and make sure that every human being saluting that flag that says that we, the people, in order to form a more perfect union, we need to form a more perfect union and not rely on the back history. And I urge you, please, don't change the names back.
Now Neil Thorndt.
Here you are, yet again, bringing Shenandoah County into the international spotlight. You all know the detailed history of these school names. In particular, when Stonewall Jackson was designated to be a whites-only institution. You all know the detailed history of segregation in this county. You all know how the Confederacy fought against the United States for the right to keep others in bondage. You all know the divisions it's creating in our schools, community, county, as evidenced here tonight in this larger venue. Collectively, you have crafted a narrative to dodge personal responsibility. A narrative that doesn't match the public record. A narrative that doesn't mention your failed attempts of 2022. How do Confederate names meet our public schools' mission? Does it prepare our students for the future? Does it ensure all members of the community are valued and respected? Does it foster an environment of trust and respect where all decisions are in the best interest of the students? Your actions, and yours alone, have led us here tonight. Your actions are a permanent testament to your person, as well as the history of our county, state, and nation. The only chance you have to come out the good guys in this is to keep the names Mountain View and Honey Run. How do you want to be remembered?
Brad Skipper.
Good evening. Brad Skipper from District 2. And for the very first time, I am speaking to you on behalf of the Shenandoah Democrats, some 10,000 registered voters. I said, "I'm speaking to you on behalf of the Shenandoah Democrats, some 10,000 registered voters." Mountain View High, originally named Stonewall Jackson, opened in 1960. Built and funded illegally for white students only. The money set aside for integrating these schools was used to continue segregation in violation of Brown v. Board in 1954 by the U.S. Supreme Court. Ashby Lee was built later on in 1975. In 2020, this board voted six to zero to adopt a resolution condemning racism and in July, voted five to one to retire the old names. There was a 90-day community review process and in January of 2021, the names Mountain View and Honey Run were chosen effective July 1. The decision was first challenged in court in August of 2020. The case was heard throughout the fall of that year into 2021, ending in a dismissal in November by the Supreme Court of Virginia. The letter of the law was followed despite claims to the contrary, and subsequent efforts to rename the schools in 2022 failed on a 3-3 vote. According to School Digger, we ranked 68th out of 131 districts statewide. We have schools that are not fully accredited and yet you folks feel that pursuing transgender students and grievance-based name changes is more important than actual education standards. This vote, if carried, flies in the face of Governor Youngkin's Executive Order Number One, which expressly prohibits inherently divisive concepts. And we can't think of anything more inherently divisive than naming schools after men who committed treason and were responsible for killing 360,000 American soldiers.
Skipper, your time is up.
Name the schools after Little Sorrel and Traveler if you want to change the names again, but not...
Karen Casperson?
Good evening. I am the Reverend Karen Casperson, District 4. I just think it's kind of ironic that it's been 1,400 days since the decision was made. The Civil War lasted 1,492 days. I hope we're not relitigating it again. What kind of message are you sending? That if you yell loudly and longly enough, you can get your name, get what you want? That if you have enough money, you can buy whatever influence and school name you want? If you're literally white and haven't experienced racism, that it doesn't exist? And the few black people you happen to know haven't shared their stories with you, so therefore there is no racism here? What kind of message are you sending? That those who are teachers, I know of at least three who have resigned in the last week or so because of the turmoil that's in our school. What kind of are we making? Look at the national and international press. It's been covered in Syria and East Asia. Reuters is here tonight, as is The Times. What kind of reputation is our county getting? We've got a beautiful valley around here. Why are we not, why have we pulled out the welcome mat and said, "If it's not our way, you take the highway up I-81 North"? Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Chairman Barlow, board members, Superintendent Shepherd, and viewers across the nation and potentially around the world via this YouTube stream. I am Dennis Atwood, a resident of Warren County since 1978. I'm speaking tonight about Agenda Item 6.6. This meeting opened, as they all do, with a pledge of allegiance to our national flag, quote, "And to the republic for which it stands," end quote, "the paramount historical fact that the leaders of the Confederacy conducted a four-year war against the USA, killing hundreds of thousands of U.S. and their own troops trying to preserve states' rights to keep slavery legal. That constitutes the ultimate in racism and treason. So how does naming a public school for any of those leaders show allegiance to our republic or attest to, quote, "indivisible with liberty and justice for all," end quote? You have followed a deeply flawed procedure in accepting the April 3 request from the so-called Coalition for Better Schools. This group provides no information regarding its expertise in public education and its survey conducted by mail to 8507, 8,507 households, had 1,160 returned. That's a mere 13.6% return rate and represents a miniscule 3.2% of 35,000-plus county residents who are voting age. Nowhere has the CBS group explained how renaming our schools for Confederate generals will make them, quote, "better." Further, I have seen no information on the SCPS website about how CBS's proposal would impact the school system's vision, goals, and strategic plan. I submit that the CBS proposal is contrary to Governor Youngkin's Executive Order Number One, ending the use of inherently divisive concepts. Nothing is as divisive as naming schools for Confederate leaders. And not because of, but being aware of extensive media coverage, I urge you to go the right way, cause that information that's out there, is going to be out there tomorrow.
Mr. Skipper, your time is up, please.
Thank you. Attitudes and reputation about Shenandoah County be positive. So please, keep the names.
Can you guys hear me? Okay. Hello, my name is Beth Ogle and I'm the parent of students who attend Honey Run and North Fork. On May 29th, 1963, my grandparents had to make a formal request asking the superintendent of Shenandoah County Schools not to discriminate against their children and to provide them the dignity and respect of an equal educational opportunity. Sixty-one years, and here I stand, formally making the same request for their great-grandchildren. What's even more disgusting than this lack of progress is the fact that this current board, save one, has offered no empathy, discussion, thought, or consideration of how restoring these names would affect minority students, faculty, and staff. In fact, the only acknowledgement has been to say that they've never witnessed racism, and so there is none. A fact that, when contradicted by this sharing of personal experiences, has been wholly ignored. Instead, you have chosen to label yourselves avengers of a flawed process, a fake narrative that was litigated on multiple levels and proven false. You have vilified the 2020 board and used them as a scapegoat to justify and feel comfortable with discrimination. A yes vote to restore the names of Stonewall Jackson and Ashby Lee is a statement to the world that you do not value the dignity and the respect of your minority students, faculty, and staff. And it will make it abundantly clear that you are here for a political agenda, not, not for the care and consideration of our children. Our schools and our community will suffer as a result. Do better, be better. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Aleah Ogle and I am currently an eighth-grade student at North Fork Middle School. This year, I played three sports at Mountain View and I take Algebra I there. I am a black student and if the names are restored, I would have to represent a man that fought for my ancestors to be slaves. That makes me feel like I'm disrespecting my ancestors and going against what my family and I believe, which is that we should all be treated equally and that slavery was cruel and an awful thing. I think it is unfair to me that restoring the names is up for discussion. People don't take the time to think about students like me who would not be proud to graduate from a school with the name Stonewall Jackson. He fought for slavery to be a constitutional right that would be carried out forever. Stonewall Jackson was passionate in his belief in that the black race was inferior to the white race. He fought and died for that belief and had he won, I wouldn't be allowed to attend public school and I would not be here speaking to you today. It is your job to make decisions that are in the best interest of all your students. You cannot ignore the heritage and feelings of your black and brown students just because we are the minority. It is your job to make our schools a place where all students are valued and respected. The names Mountain View and Honey Run do not devalue and disrespect an entire race of people, but the names Ashby Lee and Stonewall Jackson do. They honor men who believed that I have less value and worth because I am black. If this board decides to restore the names, I would not feel like I was valued and respected and you would not be doing your job. Thank you.
I really don't know much to say after that. But I'm not going to mince words here. Racism and discrimination. It's hard to understand those two things until you've actually lived them. And fortunately, I have. And I have in this county. This decision is rooted in both racism and discrimination. The media is not here tonight because you all are about to make a decision that will put you on the right side of history. The media is here to witness a truly embarrassing, racist, and discriminatory decision to change the names back to Confederate generals. I never thought a board of elected officials responsible for all children, no matter what race, no matter what color, would consider a decision that is based in racism and discrimination. It's a loud and clear message to me as a parent and to any students of color that our well-being is none of your concern. Please leave the school names Mountain View and Honey Run. Let's move forward into a more positive, inclusive future. This decision rests on you all. This is nobody else's decision. This is you six that make this decision. And I've got 35 seconds to sit here and let you all look at me. And see me as a black man in this community who is telling you that this decision is based in racism and discrimination. No other way to say it. We've still got time, Mr. Barlow. And I'm going to stand here. Thank you.
Carolyn Chilton.
Fellow citizens and school board members, thank you for welcoming, welcoming the public here tonight. My name is Carolyn Chilton, and I was born and raised in Shenandoah County and live in District One. I am a 1972 graduate of Mountain View High School then-named Stonewall Jackson. I spent all five of my high school years there and all of my elementary school years at Triplet Elementary in Mount Jackson. I went on to college and graduate schools and felt well-prepared for those by our county schools. I stand before you tonight in my general's letter jacket as a member of the Stonewall Jackson community opposed to the name change. Why am I opposed to this? Because of the kind of choice we are facing here tonight. It is presented as an either-or question. Either change the school names again and upset some people, or don't change them and upset other people. Either way, the county remains in conflict. Why do we only have this choice? Where is the leadership to help us find other solutions and answers? I believe this county has a God's plenty of good and faithful people to help figure this out and who are willing to work together to solve this issue. I am asking tonight that you let stand the names of Mountain View and Honey Run, and that in the future, we look for a way to find compromise so that we can get on with the task of making this a better county for all, where all get some of what they want, and we all get something that we don't want, and none of us have a stomachache anymore.
Your time is up.
I'm not finished quite yet. Tonight, the six of you will vote on whether to leave people in this county divided and in conflict, or whether to lead us in conversation and compromise. Which legacy do you want attached to your name?
Pat Murphy.
Hi, thank you for being here. I'm sure it's not a fun job for everybody, right? I do want to say I appreciate the fact that most of the people in the back are not making comments or laughing like they did the last time we were speaking. So I appreciate that. There's just a few people who continue to keep making comments after people speak.
You're supposed to be addressing us, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. I did make the sign, keep the new names, not slave owners' names. Okay? I know we're not all going to agree on this. I know you're all good people. I believe that firmly. I told you last time I was here that there was a teacher at WW Robinson where I worked who had a sticker on her desk. It said, "Give a northerner a ticket home." And there were many people who laughed at that. They thought that was so funny. Yeah, go home, northerner, okay? Well, I've been in Virginia for 35 years. I worked at WW Robinson for 23. I pay taxes in Shenandoah County, and I can speak as a southerner. Okay? I accept that. That's not a bad thing. Schools in this area, in the South, were named for white students only. That was their premise. Now we have students who are not white. They're not going to feel encouraged by changing the names back. For all the people that are so upset about the name changes, I encourage them to talk to Mr. Holtzman possibly and say, "Let's build some memorials, some museums for these generals." So there's not hatred, it's just a special place for those who want to honor the generals. Thank you very much.
Kelsey Lawrence.
My name is, ooh, this is. Sorry, hopefully this is not taking my time. Um, my name is Kelsey Lawrence, and here we stand at the crossroads of history facing a serious challenge that demands our attention. In Warren County, we've stared adversity in the eye before, coming together to protect our public library from the chopping block. And let me tell you, we didn't flinch then, and we sure aren't backing down now. I've seen the power of community coming together, raising their voices, and refusing to accept defeat. We've halted madness before, and will do it again, and again, and again. It's downright ludicrous that we're even debating whether to name schools after villains of a bygone era. We've learned these lessons, and it's high time we apply them, not repeat the mistakes of the past. You can't say you care about history and ban books. So let's cut through the nonsense, stand firm, and show the world that decency isn't up for negotiation. We're not just fighting against the shadows of the past, we're fighting for the future of our children. Today, I stand before you today ju-, not just as a concerned citizen, but as a voice for future generations. I've had it with divisive policies and outdated ideologies creeping into our schools. No one is taking your memories, your old yearbooks, or your letter jackets. We're simply asking to leave the past in the past. Our children deserve better. They deserve schools that nurture their potential, embrace diversity, and provide safe spaces where every child feels valued and respected. If some of our children are not safe, then none of our children are. As parents, it's our responsibility to speak up, stand tall, and demand change. We cannot afford to stay silent while our children's education is at stake, and we must unite, demand action, and demand it now. Together, we can reclaim the narrative of our schools. So let's choose names that inspire pride and unity, not division and fear. Let's build a future where every child has the opportunity to thrive, where diversity is celebrated, and where history is learned from, not repeated. Let's roll up our sleeves, raise our voices, and get to work because together, united, we're unstoppable.
Mark Pierce.
Good evening, my name is Mark Pierce. I would, I would like to congratulate you all for the recognition that you have brought to yourselves and to Shenandoah County. Your vote tonight has been covered by USA TV 9, Reuters, USA Today, AOL, Microsoft, Straits Times, NBC, BBC, CNN, US News, NBD, just to name a few. So I wonder, what, what is the spotlight that is now shining upon you and Shenandoah County going to reveal to the rest of the world? Thank you.
Laura Fogel.
Thank you for allowing me this chance to speak to you. My name's Laura Fogel. I live in Fort Valley. I'm a lifelong resident of Shenandoah County, born and raised in Woodstock. My husband and I raised our daughters here and owned and operated a small business here for over 40 years. I am ashamed to say that my full awareness of the offensiveness of the former school names and what they represent did not happen until after the neo-Nazi white supremacist rally in Charlottesville that resulted in the death of a young woman and the injury of 35 others. That horrific event became a catalyst which sparked the movement of change across our entire country to remove Civil War statues from public spaces and change the names of public buildings, including Stonewall Jackson High School and Ashby Lee Elementary School. I supported those changes once I truly understood how important it was for all of our students and their families to feel welcomed in our schools and our community. The name changes did not and do not erase any of our Civil War history, which is alive and well at New Market, Fisher's Hill, and numerous battlefields up and down this valley where that history belongs. Nostalgia over the former names, not liking the process by which they were changed, are not valid reasons for changing them back. Our students' education should be the only consideration of this board. The old names will not make the schools better, but will instead teach our children that we value names and symbols of a painful past more than we value their education and the present needs of their schools, which are many, and I know you understand that. If you vote to change them back, the question is, what next? Do you honestly think this, this issue will go away? You have a chance here tonight to put it to rest. The old names of these schools represented a war over the right to own and enslave other human beings and the segregation era of Jim Crow and the KKK that followed.
Your time is up.
Voting to return them does not preserve history, but makes that your legacy.
Anne Dalton. Is it Dalton?
Take the blue of yonder mountains and the gold of God's own sun. Our colors wave majestically. We face what will with courage true. Grateful hearts we leave with you. I am Anne French Dahlk. I live in Wakeman's Grove, Edinburgh, District Two. I grew up here. When I graduated from Central in 1968, I sang our school song as a proud member of a family who first arrived in this county eight generations ago. Tonight, I am not proud. After working for 35 years as an English teacher, I now volunteer two days a week as an English-language tutor here at Peter Mullenberg. I know a lot about what our schoolchildren need, and I know that many of their needs are not being met due to inadequate funding and staffing. I beg you to turn your attention to these pressing challenges. You are wasting our time replaying the eras of slavery and massive resistance, as well as more recently perceived slights and insults. Four years ago, all of us were free to join in the deliberations over the school names, and many of us did. If you really believe, however, that the process was flawed, then you certainly are obligated to create a better one now. Don't rely on questionable surveys with low-return rates. Postpone your vote tonight. Sponsor a county-wide referendum conducted by a reputable company. If you are unwilling or unable to create a fair and democratic process, then please, please, at the very least, look to a future more inclusive than our past has been. Retain the names of Mountain View and Honey Run. Take a step in declaring that all children, not just those of my ancestors, are welcome and will be nurtured here.
Stuart Ditawick.
Well, you certainly don't want me to sing. My name is Stuart Ditawick. I live in Edinburgh, which for the record is in neither Frederick County or Warren County. On, on my father's side of the family, Johann Stephen Ditawick received a land grant outside of Stralsburg in 1766. On my mother's side of the family, Jacob Pennywit received a land grant west of Mount Jackson in 1753. My family has lived, worked, and paid taxes in this county for 271 years. When you vote on the name restorations, will you listen to the opinions of woke outsiders who have, for the most part, no ties to the land, the history, or the culture of this county? Or will you listen to the voices of the people who elected you to represent them? The people whose families built and have sustained this county for generations? The people who are the majority in every petition, every poll, every survey, and the best is yet to come, every school board meeting? We are the majority. That's the way government works, by majority. You were elected by majority vote. This board has a moral and ethical obligation to the citizens you represent to undo the dirtiest, most underhanded political stunt in the history of Shenandoah County politics. We've made, we've made this easy for you. There should be nothing other than a 6-0 vote to restore the names. Unless, of course, my opponents find some school board votes in Georgia at 3:00 AM, it's been known to happen.
Jessica Kelly.
Good evening, my name is Jessica Kelly. I live in Mount Jackson, and I have two children at Mountain View High School. First, I am here today representing a group called Claim the Names to emphasize that the school names should remain Mountain View High School and Honey Run Elementary. These are names that bring forth images of our scenery and are non-controversial. Second, from me personally, I want to say thank you to all of those students, parents, teachers, staff, and community members, past and present, that have raised the issue and stood in opposition to the previous names of Stonewall Jackson High School and Ashby Lee Elementary. Whether that was in the 50s, and you were taught in schools without heat, or required to move away, or be bused outside the county for high school since there was no high school for non-white students in Shenandoah County, even after Brown versus Board of Education was decided and reaffirmed, I am in awe of your persistence. If, or if it was later in the 20th century and you objected to the Confederate flag in the school seal, or being displayed at sporting events, or you objected to the name of the building, I am sure that it has been exhausting hearing that the only people who complain must be calm-hears or outside agitators. I know that you have been here your whole lives. Thank you for your voices. Or, if you have just come to these things more recently, I am glad that you are here. To all of you who continue to question why it is that this community you live in, love, and know is full of good people holds on to these vestiges of the past, regardless of if you are third generation and your parents and grandparents are walking this path with you, or if you're the only one in your family or friend group who is speaking out, thank you. No matter what happens here tonight, do what you knew, do what you need to do to stay healthy and safe, but know that you are not alone. Thank you.
Stephanie Bulleth Smith. Is that right?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephanie Bulleth Smith. I am a 1983 graduate of Stonewall Jackson High School. I am here for many reasons to ask you to please do not go back in, in history. We don't need that. Our children don't need that either. We all know that much has been said and heard about the situation that we're facing this evening. Times have changed. It's time to move on from so many hurtful situations. We, you and I, must move on and support the change of our public schools and future residents. The names as they are today are much more inviting to anyone who wishes to visit or who chooses to live here in Shenandoah County. I prayerfully encourage the school board to please, 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 members, to make a heartfelt decision to keep the current school names. I want to add another thing or two. When my brother was in high school, Stonewall Jackson Football Team, a member, he was bit in the face and called a nigger by a school board member. in the face and called a nigger by a school board member today, Tom Street. And people need to know that because someone like that should not be serving in public office. I don't care where it is, they should not be serving in public office. You never apologized to my brother. You never even thought about apologizing to my brother. It went to the administration, and no one did anything to help him, okay?
It didn't happen.
It's not a personal attack.
Ms. Long, would you...
Apologize.
Miss Long, I'm going to have a seat.
Blessings to all for a better...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a seat, please.
That's all right.
She violated...
She violated decorum.
All I said to him was, he never apologized to my brother.
We heard you. Thank you. Have a seat.
We're going to have some decorum here, we're going to have a recess, and I don't know how long it's going to last, but when that recess is over, we're going to continue. So if you want to continue to have histrionics one against the other, go for it, we'll just have a recess. I'd rather stay here. The first part of this has been honorable and good. It's starting to deteriorate. I don't like it. I don't think you like it. Let's try to keep it on the up and up, and let's try to keep it on a square. And if you don't, we'll just declare a recess until things calm down a little. The next speaker is Priya, is it Dua? I'm sorry, Carolyn Long? I'm sorry, almost got to you. We'll get to you next. Carolyn Long, thank you.
Carolyn Long, District One. I'm tired, just so tired. I remember watching my children who attended Stonewall Jackson High School. When they would have a function in the gym, I stood at the door. I would not, under any condition, enter the gym where hung the Confederate flag. Fortunately, that emblem, that horrible emblem of the past, was removed, and I was able to enjoy functions and concerts and volleyball games once again in the gym. I've had many good teachers in my lifetime, in Shenandoah County, in college, as I have met new people and learned from those I've known for a long time. But my greatest teacher was my mother, Marion B. French. And this woman taught me above all else that we tackle our lives and those circumstances that we have along the way with empathy and compassion. Empathy and compassion. Those are lessons that should be taught always. And in this decision, if you are using empathy and compassion, you will not change the names
Chairman Barlow and members of the board, my name is Priya Dua, and I'm a senior attending Massana and Regional Governor's School, which is located at Mountain View High School. For two years, I've researched Virginia's massive resistance policies in a non-political facts-based manner, resulting in the production of a 30-minute documentary entitled Knocking Down Walls. The documentary has received state and national recognition for bringing attention to the pivotal battle over public school integration in Warren County, Virginia. Understanding and evaluating this past is essential to making choices that impact our present and future. I stand before you to voice my informed and heartfelt opinion, representing the views of many of my classmates at Mountain View. As students, we've walked through the doors of Mountain View High School, a name chosen to signify inclusivity and progress. School Board minutes from 1959 reveal that the decision to name our school after Stonewall Jackson was a product of massive resistance. The following statement appeared in the Northern Virginia Daily not long after Stonewall Jackson High School was named. Quote, "There are organizations of citizens dedicated to the cause of racial purity which are doing splendid educational work in this field," end quote. Many think of Stonewall Jackson High School as a place, a place where they made fond high school memories like my classmates and I have made. However, this quote shows us that the school's name was meant to convey a message rooted in a far different context. Reverting back to this name is a symbolic regression, disregarding truths of our past. I acknowledge that the community has been left divided and unhappy over the initial name change, but how can we see a brighter future when we're afraid of the changes that confront our past? By taking this step backward in 2024, what foot are we putting forward? What legacy are you leaving behind for my generation to inherit?
Mary Kate Manning.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mary Kate Manning, and I am a current student at both Mountain View High School and Massana and Regional Governor's School. I have attended Mountain View since eighth grade. I would like to affirm my classmates' message and encourage you to consider the perspective of the students. The Shenandoah County Public Schools' documented mission is to, quote, "prepare each student for a future of lifelong learning," end quote. Additionally, one of your belief statements says, quote, "All decisions are based on the best interests of our students," end quote. Both of these indicate a primary focus on current and future students. Keeping the name Mountain View High School does not have any negative impact on current or future students. However, changing the name back to Stonewall Jackson High School has potential to negatively impact current or future students. Aligning with the mission and beliefs of Shenandoah County Public Schools, important decisions like this one must consider the voices of the students. The students would be most affected by this change. As a current student, it is hard to imagine a scenario where reverting the name back to Stonewall Jackson would improve the education received by any student attending the school. I hope you consider the best interests of current and future students, as our voices should be a top priority in your decision. I appreciate your time.
Eden Schellhammer, is that right?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Eden Schellhammer, and though I'm a senior at Central High School, I also attend Massana and Regional Governor's School located at Mountain View High School, where I spend the majority of my school day. I affirm the statements of my classmates Priya Dua and Mary Kate Manning, and would like to offer a brief extension of their arguments. In the two and a half hours I spent at Mountain View, I've observed many aspects of the school that need attention. Is the board aware that in the Mountain View High School girls' bathrooms, there was no hand soap for the entire first semester of this school year? After a while, they took down the dispensers. While I understand that there's always room for progress within these institutions, lack of access to something as simple as basic hygienic resources is not something to be overlooked. My experiences at Mountain View revealed to me that there are many aspects of the school in need of reform and attention. The name displayed above the entryway is not one of these issues. The students' perspective in this discussion is one I find often to be overlooked, and as a student, I urge the board as well as the county to redirect this passion and attention to the learning environment of the students this board is organized to serve. By continuing to resurface this clearly divisive argument, the county poises itself to enter a vicious cycle, which not only continues to detract attention from other issues in campuses, but also sustains the polarization we are observing today. I hope, as a community, we can work together to remediate issues in our schools, as well celebrate and draw attention to their successes. The fact that this discussion is receiving a disproportionately vast amount of attention from the county deeply disappoints me and leads me to wonder whether we are operating in the interests of our students or the preservation of our parents' pride. Thank you for your time.
Evening. My name is Anne Wallinger. I'm a seventh-generation resident of Mount Jackson. I attended Ashby Lee Triplett and Stonewall Jackson High School. Many of my ancestors fought for the Confederacy and died for the Confederacy. Some also fought and died for the Union. I have a great passion for family and local history. I volunteer my time at the Mount Jackson Museum, where I help keep the doors open so that anyone wants to learn more about our town's history or Stonewall Jackson can come in anytime. That said, I believe that the discomfort that a Black student is subjected to in attending a school named after a Confederate leader outweighs any personal feelings any of us should have on this topic. I'd like to share with you the response from Pat Pendleton, a Black student who made our school proud when I was there by placing all state in no less than three sports. He went on to serve in the U.S. Navy, and he's now the HR Director for the City of Atlanta. When asked if he would like to sign the petition to keep the current names, he responded, "My high school memories are bad, except for Mr. Crowell, and it is because of the Confederate name that kids and parents identify their personalities, behaviors, and expectations around minorities, assuming we are supposed to be lower class. Sports became my sanctuary to escape the hate, the name-calling, and the bullying, but acting dumb is what kept me out of trouble. I will sign anything to give the next generation a chance at diversity inclusion." So I'm here today asking the board to adhere to your mission that states that all members of the learning community are valued and respected. I'm asking you to value and respect our Black students, educators, staff, and neighbors. It's your responsibility not to do what the largest number of people tell you to do, but to use your power and discretion to protect the best interests of the education of all of our students, especially those who are going to be most impacted by this decision.
Jo Lynn Beany.
Good evening. My name is Jo Lynn Beany. I'm a registered voter in District One, and I want to talk about my sister-in-law, who was one of the first Black students to attend Stonewall Jackson once integration finally took place in Shenandoah County. She entered the school as a junior and may have been one of the first Black students to earn a diploma from Stonewall Jackson. In the two years she attended the school, only one or two other students ever spoke to her. She went into the cafeteria once and said that the smirks and the snickers made her so uncomfortable, she just packed a lunch and ate at a desk by herself for two years. Just imagine that isolation. To this day, the pain of that discrimination and racism stays with her. I spoke at the April School Board meeting and heard there and read since that Stonewall Jackson graduates expressed that they did not see any issues with racism or discrimination when they were students there. That may have been a different had they been a person of color. The fact is, just because you did not experience or recognize racism does not mean that it My grandmother taught me to be a critical thinker. Regarding the Freedom Press, if you're not willing to put your name on an article and list sources, my granny would call that propaganda. If you accept funding for a political campaign from folks who have a vested interest in your vote, my granny would call that corruption. I would remind this board that your responsibility is to represent all students and stakeholders in the district. This name change issue is not student or stakeholder-driven. It was initiated by a relatively small group...
Your time is up.
...who are largely anonymous, who have not clearly stated any policy that will benefit our schools or students.
Your time is up. Thank you.
In actuality, by reverting to the names that were given these schools during a time of massive resistance...
Ma'am.
...to integration and Jim Crow laws in Virginia...
Please have a seat before I have to call a recess.
...you are perpetuating a heritage of white supremacy and racism.
You know, we've given some latitude here, and then it gets stretched and stretched. So we're either going to have to follow the rules for decorum, or again, we'll have to recess and just say later. But we have to do it. It's just common courtesy.
My name is Elizabeth Cropper, and I am a graduate of Stonewall Jackson in 2004, and I currently have a junior there now. Y'all know what you are doing. Stop pretending we know it, y'all know it. But here's the reality of the situation. You guys are nuking our children's future. When my husband got stationed in Washington State, from which he deployed to Iraq and never came home from, I had to find my way to find employment. And even though I was incredibly qualified, and not just qualified, but had received awards of... I'd received awards when I had gotten my qualifications. But as soon as they would get to the name of my school, Stonewall Jackson High School, the interview would cease. The tone would shift, and I was suddenly no longer a fit to the culture. I have friends who graduated with me who are having these same problems in DC, Baltimore, and Pennsylvania. This is easily Googleable news. Our children will not be able to get jobs. I will no longer be able to get a job because now everyone is going to think that we're racist rednecks, and that's not okay. You're nuking our children's future because, what, your feelings are hurt? That's not a good enough reason. Think... I'm sorry to be all Lex Simpson's on you, but think of the children. You're nuking their futures, you're kneecapping them before they even make it out of elementary school. This has long-lasting effects.
Good evening, Mr...
Am I close enough?
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Shepherd. My name is Don Heinman. I live in Woodstock. I'm a retired emergency room physician. I retired here at Shenandoah Memorial. I'm here tonight to respectfully request that you vote no on changing the name of Honey Run Elementary and Mountain View High School. Anything I say is going to pale in comparison to what some of the folks that you've heard from tonight. But first, thank you for being here. I really do appreciate you and many other volunteers in our county that are working tirelessly, passionately, and talentedly to make our community better. I respect the democratic process that has brought us here tonight, although I don't expect to approve your decision. We homo sapiens, which is ironic because that's Latin for smart humans, but we're socially and biologically a complex species. How else can we explain how our country has had the original sin of slavery and... How else can we explain how our country has had the original sin of slavery and racism that's been perpetuated even after we settled the slavery issue over 150 years ago? The Confederate generals' names given to these two schools, as you've heard tonight, that was done by an all-white board, just like we have here tonight. And that was, that was, that was an unethical decision then. It was politically smart, and as I suspect tonight, if you vote to change the names, that's politically smart in the short run. But it's still unethical. And long-term, I always worry about the, the...
My time's up.
My time's up. Thank you very much.
Five seconds. Five seconds. Five seconds.
The law of unintended consequences. That's what I was worried about. Thank you.
Edward Dean. Edward Dean. John Lawrence.
Good evening. My name's John Lawrence, District Three. I have three children in our school system, and I'm a registered nurse. I was born less than a mile away here at the hospital in Woodstock, and our family's roots go back hundreds of years in the valley. I'm here because I love this place, and I want you all to know I'm committed to respecting each of you and working with you to serve our kids and community. Thank you. From what I've heard you all say, I think you are framing the decision wrongly. I've heard a lot of talk about process, procedure, about rights and freedom. Like many of you, I grew up being taught from the Bible. The Apostle Paul, in his letter to the Galatians, said, "We should use our freedom not as an opportunity to get what we want, but to serve one another in love." Freedom, that's a radical statement. Freedom is something that should be used not to get what I want or even what I deserve, but to love my neighbor as myself. There are times when we lay aside our rights to prefer someone else. Just because, just because we can do something doesn't mean that we should do something. I think we're framing the question here wrongly. I don't think we should adjudicate how the names were changed in 2020. We have before us a present decision about what is best and most loving for our community. We need to look at this through a moral lens and a lens of love. I'm so glad that Chairman Barlow a couple weeks ago said, "If I were to look at this from the eyes of someone who is black, a student or parent, I would be unsettled." Why are we not talking about that? Because all throughout the South, leading up to and in the wake of integration, there was a surge of naming and renaming schools. The message was clear. It was exclusionary. Why should we give up our rights? Because again, as Paul said, if one member of the body suffers, the whole body suffers, and that's why we should act not just for ourselves. I would actually say, no, do this for yourself, because what happens to one happens to all of us, and we're in this together. So do what reason and conscience dictates tonight. Thank you.
Rosemary Wallinger.
Generation Shenandoah County, Virginia, and I'm going to read it, so I... On February the 4th of this year, the Museum of the Shenandoah Valley held a presentation exploring what desegregation looked like here in the valley. The program included citizens from our African-American community who lived through the experience in their childhood. Tom Dixon, Betty Kilby Fisher Baldwin, Marquita Mitchell, and Gwen Tolliver Nickens. Marquita, one of the first African-Americans to attend Strasburg High School, continues to live in Strasburg and worked to bring the story of the Sunset Hill School into our public consciousness. Gwen Tolliver Nickens, the first to attend Central, is the daughter of Jane Tolliver, who lived in Woodstock and whom many of you probably remember. The program was an accounting and celebration of courage and resilience through difficult times. I grew up in Mount Jackson, where I was fortunate to call the Bullitt, Carter, and Green families my friends. Very few weeks go by that I don't miss Elizabeth Bullitt. Elizabeth Bullitt was a particular hero of mine from my mother's generation. Elizabeth, in her lifetime, petitioned the school board twice, once to acquire decent books for her children's school at Creekside in Woodstock, and again for their transfer to our all-white schools, 10 years after Brown had been decided. She managed the demeaning process with grace, as did Juanita DuRette, the mother of Teresa, the first to graduate from Stonewall Jackson High School. The DuRettes still live in Newmarket. Juanita is in her 90s. To my knowledge, the lives of the Bullitts, DuRettes, Tollivers, Mitchells, Veenys, Rankens have never been celebrated in Shenandoah County. The program on desegregation that I intended in Winchester is but one of many occurring in communities-
Your time is up.
...all over the country, I swear I'm almost through, all over the country, in which the history of contemporary African-Americans is acknowledged. Instead of honoring those who fought for the right to enslave their ancestors-
Thank you very much.
...we should be honoring and celebrating-
Have a seat, please.
...what they did-
Thank you.
...to make our lives better.
Denise Stallings. So Brian Nury.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Brian Nury. I'm a resident of Stevens City. However, my family comes from Rockingham County, mostly Broadway, Timberville, Newmarket. So I, since the 1735, the Holsinger family has been a member of this community. As a historian, as a former reenactor, I've even worked at Stonewall Jackson's headquarters, where my mother managed in the 90s. History has been a very important part of my life. Preserving history, not whitewashing it, not faking it. I hear the motion from this Coalition for Better Schools, better what? What, what is the educational value in this? If they want to say true history, well, let's talk about true history. Stonewall Jackson, we could teach that he was a brilliant tactician that used the valley to his advantage and produced the best maps of the valley that had ever been produced up to that point. However, we can also remember why he was fighting that war in the valley to begin with, to uphold a system that seceded from the United States purely to protect the institution of slavery. We could, we can talk about the true history of Harry Byrd, who helped reinvigorate the Virginia economy, building our roads and so forth. However, we also have to remember his lasting effect of massive resistance and effect on the electoral system in Virginia today, to the point where Winchester has even had to separate itself from his legacy. Let's talk about Dunmore County. How many people in this room can name where Dunmore County is in Virginia? You're sitting in it. We took that name off in 1775 to take the name of a royal governor out of this county. So why are we commemorating this? If we want to look at one more piece of history, I would like to refer to General Robert E. Lee's statement in 1870, when he said that "It is wiser not to keep open the sores of war, but to follow the example of those nations who endeavor to obliterate the marks of civil strife, to commit to oblivion the, the feelings indig- engendered there." Vote no on 6.6. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Denise Stallings, and I cannot believe that I am about to read these words as the...I was raised by the author of the 13th Amendment, the great granddaughter. I'm sorry. I was raised by the great-grandson of the author of the 13th Amendment, James Ashley. I know my stepfather and my beloved granddad are just going to be rolling over when they hear me say these words, but these are the words that Stonewall Jackson was fighting for. They are. "The Declaration of Independence was fundamentally wrong. It rested upon the assumption of the equality of races. The Confederate states are founded upon exactly the opposite ideas. Its foundations are laid, its cornerstone rests upon the great truth that the Negro is not equal to the white man, that slavery, subordination to the superior race, is his natural and moral condition." That is what is known as the Cornerstone Speech, given by Alexander Stevens, Vice President of Confederate States, March 21st, 1861. Why don't you go ahead and put that right outside your door when you put that name up above those doors? Like I said, I cannot believe I am standing here. I am not from here, but you know what? My fifth great-grandmother was. I was born and raised in the North, but I found my way back, and that does not make me any less. In fact, I'm sure that many of the people here in the valley are glad to see people come home and stand up for them.
Elizabeth Michelson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and esteemed Board members. My name is Elizabeth Michelson, and I want to speak to you as a mother and grandmother, who has brought up my family on three different continents, under different school systems. And I've never encountered issue 6.6 before. I also want to say that I speak to you as a naturalized US citizen, so I should be heard. The past 30 years I've lived in Virginia, that's longer than I've lived in my whole country. How can the name of a building even matter? Well, it can impact the people using that building in that it symbolizes and represents something very important. The names of the two schools are talking about, that we are talking about here, were changed in 2020 to be inclusive and more in tune with the times. We have a diverse student body now, and all students and staff deserve to feel included and respected. As parents, we need to model love and not hate for our children. I call upon the school board to cast their votes for love, diversity, and inclusion, not hate. Vote no on the rollback of the names.
Fred Neese.
Dunmore members, thanks for having us here again this evening. Thanks for letting the voice of the Shenan- of the Southern Campus be heard tonight. I'm sorry that you are the ones that have to correct the wrongs that have been done in the past. Some people say they take offense to the school names. Well, I'm offended that they're obscuring the good names of our ancestors. I'm offended that my precious, my previous board was not straightforward with the people of the Southern District about the name change and doing a poll regarding the name change, because they knew the outcome would not give the results they wanted. We, the people of Shenandoah County, don't appreciate underhanded government officials. We respect our elders. We respect our ancestors. We take care of our families, our neighbors, and our community, the very ideals promoted by Stonewall Jackson, Robert E. Lee, and Turner Ashby. Please do what's right for Shenandoah County, restore our heritage, our history, and our school names. May God bless Shenandoah County.
Becky Scott.
Hello. My name is Becky Scott. I'm from Edinburgh, Virginia, where I was born and raised. I'm a veteran of the United States Navy, and I retired from the Shenandoah County Sheriff's Office as a lieutenant. I have one daughter, Captain Whitney Mock. She is here tonight, and folks, I couldn't ask for a better daughter. Also have four stepchildren, one step-granddaughter, who I love with all my heart. They are all biracial. My stepson shared with me once, many years ago, before these name changes even took place, that he always felt uneasy going into Stonewall Jackson as a black student athlete from Central. He recalls a time where the Confederate flag was run up and down the sidelines at football games, and it made him uneasy. I stand before you tonight, my community, friends, coworkers, school board members, to deliver one simple message: Love, as God said in the most important commandment, "You shall love the Lord God with all your heart, with your soul, with your mind, and with all your strength." But God then said in a new commandment, "I give to you that you love one another, just as I have loved you." You are to love one another. It is really quite simple, isn't it? Just to love. And folks, this doesn't feel like love to me. Let us keep that simple, yet so powerful commandment in the forefront of our minds as a decision is made tonight that could take away all of that uneasy anxiety that my stepson felt and so many other students, like Aleah feels. It really is simple. Just to love. And anyone in this room who knows me, and there are lots, I respect. That's where I come from. I come from a place of love and respect. I have loved your children. I've worked in this county, and I'm just asking that you consider the black and brown children of this community with love. Thank you.
Now, we have reached the halfway point, according to the sheets. So we've completed three. We have three more to go. I am going to suggest to the Board that we take a 10-minute recess and then reconvene in 10 minutes. Do I have a motion of that effect?
I move to reconvene at 9:30.
I second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Reconvene in 10 minutes.
No, but I tell you what, we do do. We have to tell everybody to listen right up here because it's flipping down here, and they have to get out. Yeah, you... Your son's there. It's okay. You understand. I'd like to let everybody go, but if I do, I'll...
You are... You're like number eight. Folks, 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 he's definitely... Yeah.
Now, I thought we weren't accepted anymore.
Not at the end. So Melody's guidance was to let it sign off.
Yeah, knows that.
Yeah.
It wasn't purposeful. Yeah, it wasn't purposeful.
Except not to be shared. We'll share here.
Ladies and gentlemen, please have your seats. We're going to begin momentarily. All right, ladies and gentlemen, please have your seats. If you want to conduct conversations, got in hall, that's fine, but if you want to listen up, have a seat, and we're going to begin the public comments immediately. Next speaker, G.B. Foltz. Susan Foltz. Adam Foltz.
No? Okay. Well, we're going through this sheet really fast. Okay.
Karen Eastep.
Whoa.
Doug Whitlock. Doug here?
Good afternoon, school board. Good afternoon, school board.
Mr. Whitlock, wait one second, please. This microphone keeps dropping down. We have somebody who can kind of keep it up so people can be heard?
Well, good afternoon, school board. I'm honored to have helped many of your campaigns in the most democratic way by voting. Liberals talk about the democratic process, but previous school board removed their names with no democratic process. Liberals could not even get enough to fund the current names. All these liberals are just letting hairs. We must do the right thing for our taxpayers who had to fill this. Fix what was done behind closed doors and do the right thing, and remove these current names. The names have not helped the community. If we even change the names back, it will never help the community. We are at a loss at this point. There will be no help in the future. It's done. There's one side and the other side. Please confirm what our Shenandoah County majority have elected you to do by voting yes. It's "we, the people," not "we, the woke." And I find it quite humorous that our other side can't even tell the time, and they keep talking over it. Have a great day.
Luther Santifal.
Mr. Chairman and other board members, my name is Luther Santifal, and I reside in District Two at 758 Lance Road in Edinburgh. Anybody who is objective knows the naming of a school after a Confederate leader in 1959 was a racist act, among other wrong reasons. In 2020, the then-school board saw a wrong, and they tried to fix it. In 2022, the new names were affirmed, but with some controversy. This is 2024, and if you rename the schools for Confederate leaders again, after sixty-five or so years, your actions will be doubly racist and wrong. That will be the stained legacy of you and your financial benefactors. If you insist on doing this, I can assure you that there are enough citizens in this county who will not allow you to take us back to the 1959 mentality and further destroy the positive attributes of Shenandoah County. These citizens include come-hears and been-hears. Although we understand the fear of some of the been-hears to voice their opinion today, we know they are here. They're just afraid to say anything. We will continue to pursue our agenda through factual intelligence, love, and kindness. I truly hope you leave the names as they are. Thank you.
Rhonda Richard.
Good evening, Dr. Shepherd, Chairman Barlow, and board members. My name is Rhonda Richard. I also live in Shenandoah County. Thank you for allowing me to speak and give all of us a voice tonight, and congratulations to all the upcoming 2024 graduates. I am happy to see everyone here this evening. I only wish you all cared about all aspects of the school and not just the name change. With all those that speak of the racism inside of Stonewall Jackson High School during their school years, here's what Mr. Wilmer "Sonny" Bullett, class of 1967, had to say, quote, "My fondest high school memory was being a poor little black boy and one of the first to enter the doors of Stonewall Jackson High School. During the time the school was transitioning from segregation to integration, and I experienced no major setbacks. Jim and I were treated with pride and dignity by our fellow classmates, other students, faculty, and staff. Twenty-five years later, I thank all of you for understanding and giving us a chance." End quote. This was taken from Mr. Bullett's own pamphlet that he supplied at his 25th class reunion in 1992. A few more fun facts. Did you all know that all... I didn't talk when you all were talking. Did you all know that out of all three county high schools, Stonewall Jackson had the first black quarterback? His name was Jim Rankins. Another fun fact: Tom Street was nine years old in 1980. Did you know that some of those that spoke in front of you about racism inside of the schools while they were here have been back for every single class reunion? If it was so bad, why would they come back? I asked this board to restore the names of Stonewall Jackson High School and Ashby Lee, and also, maybe if we wouldn't have wasted 300-plus thousand on a name change, we could buy soap for the girls' bathroom.
Mark Feaster.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you all this evening. We've talked a lot, we've heard a lot about racism, we've heard a lot about the wrongs and everything all the way through. And I'm not here to change anyone's mind, because I think everybody's mind's probably just about made up, but let's talk about the man named Thomas Jonathan Jackson. I don't have any notes or anything made up, so I'm just speaking from the heart. Did you know that he was a well-renowned veteran of the Mexican-American War? He was a veteran. He came back. He became a professor at VMI in Lexington. At that time, if you wanted to learn artillery anywhere in the country, maybe the world, he was the guy to go to. He had a lot of quirky ways, and believe it or not, most historians feel that he actually had autism. Okay? So he was a special needs boy himself. Okay? That's a fact. So I didn't say anything when you were talking, so do what you want to do. Okay? Okay? Also, did you know?
Excuse me, Mr. Feaster, folks in the front row over here. The constant chattering is very distracting and, and impolite. Please be silent. I, I, you know what?
That's a fact, believe it or not.
If, if you want to continue to speak, I'm going to ask you to leave. I'm expecting you to comply. Thank you.
Okay, did you know that when he was in Lexington as a professor, he taught Sunday School to slaves, which was against the law? He was teaching them to read, which was completely against the law. Okay? One more thing, after the First Battle of Manassas, where he got his name Stonewall Jackson, he penned a letter and sent it to his pastor. They wanted to make sure they were getting the information. The pastor said, "Oh, we're going to get the fine information now. This is from Stonewall Jackson." When they opened it, he did not talk about the battle. It was his check to the black Sunday School. We need to teach people about the man.
You're done. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Charles Street?
Good evening. I hope everyone is well, elected school board members. Dr. Melody Shepherd, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. First, I would like to recognize all the teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you. And also to congratulate all, all the 2024 graduates. Second, I would like to wish all the athletes good luck in the postseason. Four years ago, the previous school board divided this whole county, towns, classmates, and even families. This whole county was upset and is still upset today about the name change. It is interesting that people often comment without knowing all the facts. The facts are that Dr. Mark Johnson had sent an email on June 10th of 2020 stating the positive accolades of Stonewall Jackson High School. Quote, "It's a warm and welcoming school because the students, teachers, administration, and parents have made it so." On July 3rd, the agenda was set, the vote was changed on names at the July 9th meeting. At this time, the previous board said it was raise the monies. If it was asked by a board member, what happens if the money's not raised, then the names will not be changed. It was also in a minute stating lastly that the budget should not be used for funding this name change. Now comes the amendments to FY 2020 budget. Because only $36,000 have been raised, $135,000 came from the budget frozen teaching positions, $134,000 came from budgeted SVRP funds. So when people say more money should be used for education teachers, please remember the facts. The previous board spent almost $270,000 of budgeted monies to fund a name change that could have been used to get students back in school and for education, teachers, and supplies. Instead, the previous board was making a decision on half of the community, while the community county was mad and are still mad now. The process was wrongfully done and had been left up to the people. Maybe everyone had been okay with it. Thank you very much for your time. Proud graduate, Stonewall Jackson, 1982.
Mike Shivey?
Good evening, everyone. It's no longer afternoon. I've at least figured that out. So, um, board members, Chairman Barlow, Dr. Shepherd, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Most of what I would have said, um, I've said already and has been said on, uh, by other people here this evening. Stark difference between now and 2020. We keep talking about the past and history and things, and the, the big difference to me tonight is that there's been a lot of opinions been able to be given in this room by both sides. Okay? I've heard talks of surveys, speeches, and everything. Our republic, well, and cornerstone, I've used, heard that used several times. Well, the right of people to be, take part in their government is the cornerstone of our republic. And I applaud you, this school board, for giving us the opportunity to exercise that. That was overlooked and that was not done in 2020, and I applaud you all for doing it. Thank you for your time.
Roslyn Honesty?
Good evening, and thank you so much for allowing us, the public, to come in and speak. I'm not a resident of Shenandoah County. However, I do stand here as one of the co-facilitators for a national organization called Coming to the Table. Table being the acronym for Taking America Beyond the Legacy of Enslaved. And so with that being said, um, I think it was Brandy that prayed, in her prayer for God to unite us. He already has. We're his. Problem is, not about the name, is we've forgotten whose we are and who we are. And when we can finally come to understand that peace, then we can treat each other with dignity and respect. Four hundred years of making a pledge to the flag to be one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all is just a prophecy. It's almost, um, how do you say, an insult to our intelligence that we haven't quite figured out that we've lost our way. We were, our country was founded on a crack, and you can't build anything on a crack. And so, my prayer is that we see each other as each other's. We belong to one another. And all the rest of it is just a, a bunch of wasted time. I have relatives who fought in the Civil War. Recently, I've been taken back seven generations to understand that I have, you know, why I'm white, because I'm part white. But we're children of God, and that's really what I want to say. It's not really about the name. The change name is that we're children of God. Let's, let's just name the school Children of God, and then everybody will be part of it.
Thank you. Delois War? I'm sorry, yeah. It's, uh, Delois N. War?
Hello, thank you for hearing me. I've been here before. I, it was the first person of college to step foot inside Stonewall Jackson High School in 1964. That day I walked in, it scarred me for life. Right now, I'm trying to deal with it. I was fine in the last two years when the names went to nice names, but now I have two grandchildren out on that end of the county. One is at Norfolk, one is at Honey Run. It's going to hurt me again if they have to go through what I went through. I do not want their lives scarred. I tried to get my granddaughter to not put them in that school, but because she's at the border, the boundary line, they have to go there. But I am not happy if my grandkids has to go through what I went through. Thank you.
Jay Jarrett?
To the school board, thank you for listening to the actual residents of Shenandoah County. We know that in 2020, that school board ignored petitions with 3,000 signatures to keep the original names, and they continued with their fast-paced plan to change the names. They even tried to keep it secret from one of their own board members. In 2022, that school board had the opportunity to survey residents concerning restoring the names, but you know, the motion died on a 3-3 vote. Now in 2024, independent surveys were sent to all households in Districts One and Two. Critics suggest that the results would have been different if the entire county had been surveyed, but I believe Shenandoah County would vote overwhelmingly in favor of restoring the names. Those 3,000 petitions from 2000 had names from Newmarket to Strasburg and from Cedar Creek to Fort Valley. A referendum, if needed, would allow all registered voters in Shenandoah County to decide. I remind you that no taxpayer money is needed to restore the names, unlike when the names were changed and that board magically discovered $300,000 supposedly not needed in the special education account. I thank you for listening to county residents, and I ask that you restore the names and respect and honor the rich history of Shenandoah County.
Kara Bolgersak?
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak. Um, I live in Shenandoah County, District Three. I had a bunch of words planned that I've just decided to scrap because I've been so moved by what we've heard tonight, especially from our students and our black community members. Um, and I just want to reflect on their words. I, I really respect all of you, and I've had some wonderful exchanges with some of you over email that I, I really appreciated. Um, and I really believe you when you say that if you're interested in changing the names back, that it's not about racism for all of you. I think you're good people who really want the best interest of our community. Um, but, but tonight, we have heard from a number of our black community members and folks with black relatives and friends, and we've heard their stories and their experiences with these names. And you may not have believed before that these names were racist, but if you've heard our community members, you know and you understand that they are actually racist names and they are harmful. And when you know better, you need to do better. And some people have suggested that you all came here tonight knowing how you were going to vote, and that might have been true, but that doesn't mean you have to stick with what you were thinking you would do, even if you talked to the media or emailed people. You have the ability right now to really demonstrate the importance of education, which is that when you learn things, you can grow and you can change your minds. And I hope that all of you will reflect on what you've heard tonight and make a decision that's going to really benefit our community and demonstrate to the community and to our students that you can listen to people and act with compassion and love and make decisions that are going to help our students and our community. So I ask that you please reflect on what you've heard tonight and keep the current names. And if you feel that out of respect for the members of the community that want to change the names back, that you can't vote against this, I would ask that you also respect our black residents and perhaps consider just abstaining from voting tonight out of a sign of respect for everyone. Thank you.
Lee Witherspoon? Witherspoon? Uh, Dane Hooser, is that right?
Good evening. I'm Dane, and I'm a lifelong, actual resident of Shenandoah County, and I'm here tonight to speak in favor of keeping the current names Mountain View and Honey Run. And I hope I'm not the only person, excuse me, who sees the irony in starting this meeting, the Pledge of Allegiance that says we're one nation that's indivisible, while we discuss whether or not to honor men who sought to tear our nation apart in a failed effort to keep our black brothers and sisters in chains. We remember our history by studying it, not by naming public buildings after racist traitors to our nation. We wouldn't name a school after Benedict Arnold, and he was responsible for far less death and hardship than those Confederate pigs who killed American soldiers right here in Shenandoah County. You know what the right decision is, and please, I implore you, do not embarrass our community in front of the world tonight. Keep the current names Mountain View and Honey Run. Thank you.
Bill Wine? Marvin, is it Black or Block? Come on up.
Uh, is this one? Okay. Hello, my name is Marvin Black. I graduated GMU with a history degree, and I'm going back in the fall for a master's degree. Now, I was going to, uh, read something from the cornerstone speech, but someone already beat me to that, so I'm going to just, uh, add on to that, that, um, the people that were trying, were debating about restoring the names to, they weren't just average soldiers that were enlisted to defend their farms or whatever reason they had. These were officers in the Confederate Army defending the government based upon the cornerstone speech's foundation, which again, was stated by Alexander Stephens, the Vice Presidency of the Confederates, the Confederate Nation. I would also like to say that history is not remembered through names and statues and all that. By saying, saying getting rid of them removes history, that's not the case. It is how we glorify people. So by, if we vote to restore the names, you're saying we're going to glorify the people who was trying to keep a government that wanted the permanent codification of slavery for generations in power. So we should instead continue on the path of reconciliation and facing the path and its lessons, no matter how painful and difficult it may be. The lessons of the Civil War, you know, and everything that came beyond that. Thank you.
Trey Heischman?
Good evening, school board, board of members. Dr. Melody Shepherd. I'd like to thank you for take, for letting me take the time here to speak about the name change. My name is Trey Allen Heischman. I'm currently a member of Mountain View FFA, uh, Mountain View FCC LA, and I also live in District Two. My last name goes back six generations of conservative farmers in this county who paid taxes to this county and for as long as I, and I also pay taxes now. I'm 18, I filed for them. So I'd like to see, hopefully, that we can put the name back the way it is and back in this county, and I'm an upcoming graduate of Mountain View as of tomorrow. So I'm hoping that my fellow friends who are juniors at the, at the school can see that the name has been changed and that they can graduate under SGAHS and not have to pay extra money to get it on their diploma. Thank you.
Otis Ryman? I'm, I'm sorry, say that, say that again? All right, if, if you give your name and address so that you can be recorded.
Hello, my name is Joni Hovatter. I live at 336 Dotson Road, Mount Jackson, Virginia. I have a taxpayer in Shenandoah County, and I am married to a farmer with four children and three grandchildren. Thank you, Otis. You and I are going to be friends later. I have three points. First of all, thank you, Board Members, Dr. Shepherd, for being in a very difficult place and a very challenging evening. Second of all, to all educators, administrators, parents, thank you because it is Teacher Appreciation Week. The last thing that I'd like to share with you is a little bit of a perspective. In 2020, a school board decided in eight days or nine days to make a decision. They had the right to do it. It has been challenged, and it was upheld, but the voices were not heard. Whether the names are changed or not changed, there has to be public input. I'm watching the clock. As a result, we must understand that teaching and learning are obviously your job. That's your emphasis. Teaching and learning helps us learn the good, the bad, and the ugly from history. And certainly tonight, we've heard excerpts when it wasn't very good. I would like to share that my family raised me to have children to participate in sports where they were the minority, and they excelled, and I'm very proud of that accomplishment. That took skill, and it took understanding and empathy, the things that we heard tonight on both sides, compassion and kindness. A name is very important, however, it's the culture and the climate of the place where that name is. I'm very proud to have grown up in this environment, to now work in an environment where it's highly diverse and a very high poverty area. I am not working in Shenandoah County at this moment. Thank you. Thank you. I did good.
You can do whatever you want. Okay. Krenner's gonna pass. Brenda Welch.
I was here last month and started out asking you all if you knew who Queen Lilio Kalani was. This time, I'm going to ask you if you know who the Latin Kings are. Have you ever heard of them? Okay, so, and just like Paul in Scripture, that was mentioned. I love the Lord. So with Paul, I'm gonna boast like he did, but I'm also gonna talk about some things that I think people need to know. So I have a degree in Historic and Political Studies. My grandpa was a World War One vet. My dad was a World War Two vet that fought in Germany and died, not in Germany, but when I was 13 years old. And if we tear down our history, we lose it, and we're gonna be determined to repeat it. And so, so many people have, have good and bad arguments on both sides, and I was like, wow, that's good. And I was gonna say, no, I don't want to talk anymore. But I grew up in Chicago with racism and with discrimination. The Latin Kings was a gang. They came and took my dog, threw him up in the air, and I was six years old and watched him go on the ground. Then we moved out to Skokie, Illinois, where the Nazis marched in 1977. And I came here, I'm so excited that we're at John Peter Gabriel Mullenberg's Middle School. He was an American Revolutionary War hero. And so if we keep tearing down our history, we're gonna repeat it. So I know you all have a huge decision on your shoulders, but if we don't learn from history, we are gonna repeat it. There's good and bad about Stonewall Jackson, but guess what? You could learn from it. And when we tear it down, we're gonna repeat it. So thank you, and I hope you make the right decision for this county.
Good evening. Due to the time Nolan had to leave and ask if I could read this for him, I'm reading on behalf of Nolan. Good evening, School Board Members. My name is Nolan Armentrow. I live in District Two, and I currently attend North Fork Middle School. But next year, I would be at Stonewall Jackson High School if the previous school board would have asked the people. None of us would be here. I hope all of you make, don't make the same mistake. I want my FFA jacket to say Stonewall Jackson and my diploma to stay, to say Stonewall Jackson. The original names of the schools, Stonewall Jackson High School and Ashby Lee Elementary School, relate to our rich Civil War history in our county. I hope you vote for the voice of the people to restore the original names. Thank you for your time this evening.
Mr. Wendling, no? Sarah Kors.
My name is Sarah Kors. I am a descendant of soldiers that served in the Stonewall Brigade, an alumna of SGAHS, and a parent with children attending Mountain View and North Fork. Thank you for an opportunity to speak on Agenda Item 6.6. This issue is being voted on during the busiest time of the year for teachers, parents, and especially the students. They are taking SOLs, final assessments, and prepping for exams. Imagine the extra stress caused because you chose to push this right before graduation. None of you were voted into office by the children that you serve, and yet the children should be your number one priority, not anonymous groups. The teachers and staff are your second priority. Any decision you make should draw primarily from the voices of the children, the teachers, the staff, because they are the most impacted. Our country, our state, our county have not always done well in protecting the rights of its citizens. And Shenandoah County, a perceived overwhelming majority led to 12.5% of the population being enslaved. Children bust out of county for their high school education and diplomas, and almost a decade of operating illegally segregated primary schools and whites-only high schools during anti-integration policies after Brown versus Board. This is part of the past, but reverting to the names of Confederate leaders on our public schools claims as our common identity these injustices perpetrated under the banner of Confederate pride, none of which align with the ideals of civic duties to which our children will one day be called. Martin Luther King Jr. once envisioned a beloved community, one that transcended concepts of race, tribe, class, and heritage. Please keep the new historic names, Mountain View and Honey Run, places where all our children can learn how to be we, the people of the United States of America, together.
Thank you for letting me take the time to talk to you all this evening. First and foremost, I am a graduate of Stonewall Jackson, 2001. Both my parents are graduates, 1969, 1974, Stonewall Jackson High School. My brother, 1996, graduated Stonewall Jackson High School. I am a father of two kids, nine and 13, both boys. They are at Ashby Lee, and one is in North Fork. Regarding the name change, in my opinion, it was heritage. It was no hate in school. I am from Mount Jackson for 41 years. I am not from a different county. I am from here, home. This is what we call home. A lot of the kids here, got a couple back here, go to school with my boys. They love it. So restore the names back to Stonewall and Ashby Lee. There was no problems until they changed the names, and we all know that. There was no issues. So thank you very much.
Good evening, Dr. Shepherd and School Board Members. My name is Carter Heichman, and I live in Edinburgh District Two. I'm a three-sport athlete and was just elected into the Mountain View FFA as a Sentinel for this year. I stay very active and would like to wear a name that I am proud of. Not only do I want to have my FFA jacket say Stonewall as I entered high school, but I would also love to have my jerseys, which I wear all year round, say Stonewall. If this is all directly pointed to the students, then I think we should all listen to the students and listen to what they have to say. And I hope that you all will take into consideration changing the names back to what they properly were, Stonewall Jackson High School and Ashby Lee Elementary School. Thank you for your time tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you again. I know you've all seen my face before. I don't, I'm not going to say anything new that you all haven't heard before, but it, what blows me away is that we're talking about, because it was named Stonewall, that there was, nobody learned anything. Nobody got jobs. Nobody could get a job because we were named, we had name of Stonewall Jackson to our diploma. Well, I know for a fact that this county has graduated from Stonewall some successful individuals that are educators, that are major businesspeople in the community. And I have, I went to school with a girl who was, young black lady, several of them that became major talk show people on TV. So saying that the name held people back is not. We can't change that history, as we all know. We can't change the hate. The people that are hating now are going to hate regardless if it's anything else. So I look at it as, I think it's wrong. I think we need to go back to Stonewall and the elementary school. It's just, it's a sad state of affairs, and I'm sorry that you all have to be up to this, but it isn't about the racism. I know, and it, just because your skin is, my skin is not black, doesn't mean I have not had treatment of being picked on or beat up or anything else, okay? So everybody has a story to tell. Every one of us has some type of story and some type of racism. And thank you very much, and y'all have a blessed night.
I'm speaking on behalf of myself now, so. Good evening, Dr. Shepherd and School Board Members. My name is Carrie Heichman. I live in District Two, and I have three children on the southern campus, one in each school. I, I come to you this evening not to bring you a history lesson, because you have had many of those tonight. I come to you this evening to ask that you right the wrong of the decision of the previous board and restore the names back to Stonewall Jackson High School and Ashby Lee Elementary School. And one other thing I'd like to point out, as Linda just said, I was able to acquire a job with the federal government with a diploma that stated I graduated from Stonewall Jackson High School, class of 1999, and never had one issue. So I don't think that a diploma with Stonewall Jackson High School has anything to do with it. Thank you.
Brandy Drake? The Drakes are gone, okay? Will Pence.
Mr. Chairman and Members of the Board, I hope the irony isn't lost on you that several hours ago, when we opened this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, before discussing whether to name schools after leaders of a failed rebellion against the same flag. Shenandoah County was founded 252 years ago. Only four of those were spent as part of the Confederacy. What qualities or policies from less than 2% of the life of this county stand out and make it heritage and warrants naming schools after? This school board has embarrassed the county by showing more interest in scoring cheap political points in an imagined culture war and making international news than their actual responsibility, which is providing the best education for children in this county. The decision to rename this school will put the schools, the board members, and this county on the wrong side of history.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the, Members of the Board, Dr. Shepherd, my name is Bill Pence, lifelong resident of Shenandoah County. We come here tonight with the suggested premise that this action is, is righting a wrong or restore, just simply restoring a name. I'm sorry, that's a false narrative. You're naming our schools after Confederate leaders in 2024. That's incredible. That's how history will note it. At the least, it's insensitive. At worst, it's racist. Most importantly, something you may not consider is it will reflect poorly on our county for many years to come, particularly in economic development. If we ever want to attract new businesses to our county, one of the first things businesses look for when they come is the school system, and would they would be willing to relocate their employees to this area. This would not look welcoming nor friendly. Please do not rename the schools.
Chairman Barlow, Members of the School Board, Superintendent Shepherd, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Kenny Wakeman. I live in Wakeman's Grove. I have been a lifelong resident of Shenandoah County, except for the time I spent in the Air Force. In the mid to late 1950s, three schools were being built in this county. Citizens at that time had the opportunity to name those schools. Strasburg in the north, Central here in the central part of the county, and for whatever reason, Stonewall Jackson was chosen as the name of the school in the southern campus. That name stood proudly for 60 years until in 2020, due to the actions of a rogue police officer in Minneapolis, Minnesota, the knee-jerk reaction of the board that at time chose to change the name of that school along with Ashby Lee. Citizens had no input. Tonight, we are standing here with citizen input, addressing you to see if you would restore those names or keep them as they are. I do not envy you the burden and the task that is set before you tonight. It's heavy on your heart, and it's heavy on your shoulders. You could take that responsibility off of you and let the citizens decide for you what those names should be. If they're voted to retain the names, the other side would gripe, rumble, growl, but go along with it. If you, if they would vote- If you, if they would vote to restore the names, the other side would do the same, but the citizens would have a voice, like we're doing tonight. Thank you for your time.
Steve, whoever you are, I need a lesson in penmanship. We can't figure out your name here. It looks like Steve Wick, Wickham? Am I close? Looks like, yeah, you, Mount Jackson Road. Somebody find that man an English teacher.
He was at Stonewall Jackson. I'm Steve Weaver, a graduate of, 82 graduate of Stonewall. Thank y'all for letting us talk and listening and, and I'll make everybody else, this is, this is a lot of, a lot of responsibility for everybody, but for you all, I know it's going to be a hard decision, but when I'm at school there, I swear I never one time thought about racism at all, nothing. And we had black guys, we had white guys, and we didn't think that way, white and black. We had a black quarterback, Steve Brown, in football, and I thought he was wonderful. And I didn't think of him as a black quarterback. I thought him as, as a damn good quarterback, not a black quarterback or a white quarterback. And that's how we thought then. I mean, that's how it was. And this evening, I hear nothing but racism, 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 and, and I tell you what, I didn't think I was racist, but by God, I'm starting to think I'm going to be racist now. So thank you all for listening and, and I hope you vote the right way and I'd like to see it restored back to Stonewall Jackson. Thank you all.
Stephen Custer.
I'm Steve Custer. I grew up in Shenandoah County, went to Stonewall, graduated in 1978. I never saw any racism in school. I'm a firm believer that there's racism is being taught. Because we've over, we've overcome that hurdle. Now we're trying to take history out of the county because somebody is talking about racism. Well, I got grandkids, I got sons, I didn't teach them racism and they don't have racism in the heart, but if we're talking about racism, my name is Stonewall Jackson, am I racist? You know, somebody named Stonewall Jackson, look at what the man done. He did not, he fought for his country, he, you know, he did what, at that time, what was in that part of the country, that's what was called upon him. You know, I looked at vets. I looked at people in World War II, World War I. Did he, did he go do what they had to do? Yes. Did he want to? Yes. They wanted to serve the country. Don't you think Stonewall Jackson had that pride that he wanted to serve his country too? You know, I think that racism is something that is, in the past, if you want racism, you gotta keep, you gotta keep stirring it up. And this is what's, this is what's going on, you know? All we hear is racism. Hey, I got good black friends, I love them to death, they're just like brothers to me, and I don't thank people by their color. I thank them how they present themselves to one another. Thank you all.
Joseph Kors.
Good afternoon, school representatives. I am Joseph Kors, a sophomore from Mountain View High School and a future MRGS student. I implore you to vote against reverting the current school names back to Stonewall Jackson and Ashby Lee. This is my third time speaking on behalf of this issue. Can we not move on? The school name was settled when the bo, when the board voted to accept the names Mountain View and Honey Run twice. I'm exhausted. The other students here tonight are exhausted. Please stop wasting time deliberating on this job problem that is inclusive to all students and faculty and instead devote your time and resources to improving the infrastructure and curriculum. Also, on the aspect of racism in the schools, I've seen and heard other white kids that I can name say the N-word and literally raise their fist and say white power. I've seen that at a track banquet. Someone did that by accident, but it's still something that happened. Thank you for your time.
Steve Heichman.
Good evening, School Board members, Dr. Shepherd, Chairman Barlow. Thank you for allowing me to have my verse, voice heard this evening. I'm Steve Heichman, District Two, Conningville. It was good to see the members of the school board and Dr. Shepherd recently at both of the FFA banquets on the Southern Campus. I am a graduate of 1977 from Stonewall Jackson High School and I am in great support of restoring the names of the schools on the Southern Campus that was aggressively and unlawfully changed according to the Virginia Supreme Court under the COVID met, meeting ethics at that time by the previous liberal school board. As I have asked several times at school board meetings with controversial wrongdoings like library books with adult sexual content available to minors, where is the accountability? A couple of years ago, this woke movement swept across this country like a dirty cancer. This school board and the leadership of Dr. Shepherd has a priority of educating the students of this county and should not have to deal with gender identity, pronouns, furries, furries, LGBTQ issues. None of these issues should be allowed in the public schools. These issues are a large part of why 10% of the children of Shenandoah County are homeschooled today. And that should sound a major alarm to all of us. Tearing down statues and monuments and erasing history while indoctrinating children is exactly what Adolf Hitler did in the late 1930s in Germany. We learn from history to become a better people. In America, we live in a constitutional republic that is government of, by, and for the people. You have listened to a couple dozen people this evening and remember the several thousand that you have heard. Thank you.
Jonathan Heichman.
Jonathan Heichman, District Two, educational facts to consider. Last night, Wednesday, while I was studying with my daughter Fiona, a fourth grader, now Honey Run, we were preparing for the Virginia Studies SOL that was actually taken today here on the Southern Campus. The Shenandoah County Schools provided a wonderful manual, this study guide, is work in progress over the course of the semester. This curriculum was created by the Commonwealth Virginia Board of Education as the History and the Social Sciences Standard of Learning Curriculum Framework for Virginia Studies 2015 and updated in 2020. During our studies, Fiona and I rehearsed ourselves with the settlements of Jamestown, the Revolutionary War, the New Nation, the creation of West Virginia, the Civil War, the Reconstruction of Virginia, the Freeman Bureau, and the Jim Crow laws. Definition terms like enslaved African Americans, freed African Americans, segregation, racial segregation, desegregation, discrimination, and civil rights were all included in the approved curriculum from the Commonwealth as history needed to be retained by our students to pass the SOL. Identified through the Civil War chapter are the following Civil War leaders as listed in this material. Union Northern Leaders, Abraham Lincoln, Eusis S. Grant, Confederate Southern Leaders, Thomas, Stonewall Jackson, Robert E. Lee. The provided material in front of you identified by the Commonwealth, Thomas Stonewall Jackson as a Confederate general that played a major role in the Battle of Bull Run where he earned his name Stonewall for bravely and courageously holding his ground. The study material clearly outlines the good and bad of Virginia history with the above leaders included Thomas Stonewall Jackson as an impact and a positive example without negative impacts to their legacies, the true character that they possess. The Commonwealth Virginia clearly outlines the Civil War and its history as needed events in the education of our children and highlights the leaders of the war to include Thomas, Thomas Stonewall Jackson as a positive role model as he was. If the Commonwealth of Virginia educates our children with these standards, then who are we to question the Commonwealth with the personal opinions and feelings?
Time's up. Thank you. Dorothy Lamb.
Good evening. Thank you all for the time and dedication that you have put forth in listening to those representing both sides of the name change issue. I am certain that no one on this board anticipated the passion that each would bring in highlighting their preference on the subject.
I'm afraid you're just going to have to hold it up there. It looks like it's a mess.
Okay. There have been allegations made, not only about the history of General Jackson and the building and naming of the schools here, but also of an individual who not only did not say or do the actions that he has been accused of, according to the mother of the alleged victim, but who also was a student at New Market Elementary School and not associating with students at the high school. To you, sir, I apologize that you have been erroneously targeted. I ask that when you cast your vote, you remember that Stonewall Jackson and others fighting on the side of the Confederacy in this area were intent on protecting and preserving the land, the buildings, and the lives of those under attack. Preservation is the focus of those wishing to restore the names of Stonewall Jackson High School and Ashby Lee Elementary School. Please consider the leaders of those schools over the years, leaders like Max Hutton, Bill Smitherman, William Grimley. Do you believe that any of these individuals would tolerate racist behavior? I assure you, they did not. For that matter, do you believe racist behavior was tolerated by Karen Wetzel during her 10-year tenure?
I want you to leave your personality.
It's not, it's not negative. It's, I promise, it's not negative.
Finish up.
During her 10-year tenure from 1998 to 2008, during some of those years, Dave Heingardner was the vice principal, again, an individual who would draw a hard line where racism could have been alleged. It is under their leadership and their predecessors that the first African-American quarterback in the county was chosen at Stonewall Jackson High School. It is also under their leadership that the first African-American was voted in as her SCA representative.
You can finish up.
I can't finish when I can't, the mic issue.
Five seconds.
Okay.
Five seconds.
It is also under their leadership that the first African-American was voted in as her class SCA representative at every grade level. These are celebrated and we are proud of them.
Thank you. Fine. Thanks, Mrs. Lamb. Emily Scott.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I can't believe that we're here again. I, I really am heartbroken that a roomful of people that I grew up with and knew feel the way that they do. I cannot understand how we can listen to a parade of white people tell us there was no racism at Stonewall Jackson High School. The only people that we need to hear from in terms of racism are the people that suffered from racism, my African-American brothers and sisters. I really would like to advocate for my brothers and sisters and suggest that we not change the names back because it hurts people. I don't think that people are taking into consideration they are hurting their friends and neighbors by sitting up here and saying that racism still doesn't exist. I, I suggest that even changing the names back is an active act of racism. There is no reason to even bring the issue up except to make a point that, well, we're not going to let liberal wokes tell us what to do. Well, I resent being told what to do. I'm a Shenandoah County native. I don't like people from outside coming here and telling me what to do either, but I know right and wrong. And it's not right to be deliberately racist. It's not right to make statements that are deliberately racist, and it is absolutely wrong not to take into consideration the passionate feelings of my African-American brothers and sisters. Thank you.
Seth Kaufman.
Good evening. My name is Seth Kaufman. I live in Quicksburg. Throughout the past few weeks at the board meetings, each of you have talked ad nauseam about the process in 2020, but next to nothing has been said about the actual name some want the schools changed back to or the appropriateness of Confederate general names on school buildings in the 21st century. Nothing has been said about the students and what is in their best interest. The only person to ever mention students was Chairman Barlow when he said he would be, quote, unsettled about the names going back if he were a black student or parent. My guess is you probably felt unsettled tonight with some of the things you heard. And that unsettled feeling is a little bit of empathy and compassion sneaking in. It's putting yourself in someone else's shoes and trying to imagine what they might be feeling and what they might be experiencing. So I got a couple of questions for you. If Shenandoah County were to build a new school today in 2024, would you consider naming it after a Confederate general? My guess is the answer would be no. And so if that's the case, the follow-up is why? Ask yourselves why? Would be because there's meaning in a name. We always say strong communities come from strong schools and the schools are central to our community. The names on the buildings mean something because they represent us all. If you were to answer yes, that you would put new schools, Confederate names on new schools, well, let's just go whole hog. Let's go ahead and change Central to Jubal Early and Strasburg to Jeb Stewart. Jubal Early at least fought battles in Shenandoah County, had exploits and failures at Cedar Creek and Fisher's Hill. How can we expect the kids to know about the history if the names aren't on the buildings? I mean, that's the kind of rhetoric and rationale that's coming out of this Coalition for Better Schools. It's not logical. It's not sound. You keep talking behind the process. Are you going to send the message that following the process and doing the process right is more important than doing the right thing? That's the message you're sending if you change these names back. Do the right thing, the ends do justify the means. Thank you.
James Dillinger.
I'm here to address the board as a father of three children, two in the Southern Campus that are currently attending Honey Run. We are here today to discuss the controversial topic of the school names. The names, in my opinion, were changed without parent and voter input in 2020. The closed meeting forced us something the majority did not want. We were forced to accept that we had no voice and input into the discussion of the public that affected my children. What is more sacred than the discussion of the public in a constitutional republic? The majority has spoken and we want the name changes back and the voices to put proper procedures in place that will continue to include all public voices, no matter the atmosphere or the current being. School names do not cause racism. The ideology is taught. It is one that has not tolerated in my home and my children would not do it. It is one that has not tolerated in my home, and my children will not do it. I thank you for all your hard work and dedication to our students. Your work does not go unnoted. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for being here tonight. I know this is a late evening, and I drove all the way down from Charlottesville, which is an hour and a half drive just to speak here today. But while I'm not a resident, I feel very passionate about this issue because I'm a member of the Virginia Council. Our chairman is John Reed, and he's actually running for Lieutenant Governor of Virginia. But our organization stands firmly against the removal of monuments in Charlottesville and Richmond, the renaming of our schools after the woke revolution of 2020. And as Thomas Jefferson once said, eternal vigilance is the price of liberty. And the folks in this county stood up, and they said, we do not want to have our schools renamed. They spent over $300,000 to do this instead of spending money on the children's education. Now, I come out here today for the first time since 2020 in support of a name change. Let's put the names back. I think we must do that. Let's un-cancel Stonewall Jackson. Thank you.
I can't believe we're doing this in 2024. All right, I'm Katie Frekley, resident District Three, and I'm really sorry. I'm nervous. I don't usually get nervous speaking up, but this, this makes me nervous. Earlier this evening, with a shaky voice, I had to tell my teenage son that I would be home late tonight because I had to do my part. He knows why. We talk about it. We talk about why it's important for him to do his part, too. We have to talk about it. It's the only way to break the cycle of systemic racism. It's the only way for him to know right from wrong. It's the only way he'll learn that it's shameful to make excuses for unkind behavior, excuses like hiding behind a propagated faulty process as a means of justifying the continuation of systemic racism. After listening and reflecting on everything I've heard tonight, I think my comments are less for the board and more for the community that now includes our national and global friends. I just want to say to the people of Shenandoah County, if this board chooses to move us backwards, I'm begging that the community keep pushing forward. Don't give up. Don't give up fighting for what's right. Don't hide behind cowardly excuses. Do your part to break the cycle. Systemic racism is something we are all responsible for fighting each and every day with our individual and collective big and small acts of kindness and empathy. Keep doing your part. Keep doing those big and small acts. It matters, and you have to know that it matters. And just a thank you, a thank you for continuing to show kindness and compassion to my fellow neighbors, community members. It is very much clearly needed right now. Thank you.
Carter, the fifth.
Hey, um, so I'm here talking about how I want the names to stay the same and not be changed back because I, though I'm a student of Stralsburg High School, I'm also a student of Massanutton Regional Governor's School, which was recently moved from Triplet Tech to Mountain View High School. So, uh, we've, we've been sitting here talking about, you know, all this money stuff, money, money, money. So if we have all this money to change the name back, why don't we use it to improve the school? And we're gonna sit here and complain and gripe about how, you know, the money was used to change the names in the first place? Why would we do it again? I don't understand that. Um, if we don't fix this unjust name change when it happened, if we didn't fix it when it happened, why would we do it now? It's been four years. Like, it's been a long time. I don't know. So, uh, the old board, if we say the old board wasted the money, why would we do it again? I, I don't know. I'm struggling to understand why we would do that again. So, um, at Stralsburg, I'm a member of the Dream and Color Alliance, which is, uh, colored students coming to together and talking about how we can fix our environment and talk to others and educate others on how inclusivity and diversity is an important topic. So, um, yeah, if it didn't before, a diploma with the name Stonewall Jackson High School on it, with all this press here, I don't know if we're gonna sit here and talk about how awesome it's gonna sound if they realize we came from there. And I don't know, they just, it won't sound great, is all I'm thinking. So, yeah, if we're gonna talk about repeating history, they named the school due to racist thought processes, and so we're gonna rename the school back to it? Don't understand that either. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members. I'm not prepared. I'm sorry. It's been a long week in the concession stand at the high school. Okay, so to start out with, I have one question for everybody here. I know that I can't have an answer, but if somebody would like to see me after, I would like an answer. We are standing ironically in Peter Mullenberg Middle School. I did take history in school, and if I'm confused, are we not wanting to name the school back to Stonewall Jackson because he was a Confederate general or because he was a slave owner? Because Peter Mullenberg was a slave owner as well. So I would like someone to answer that for me. Spending the money that was spent prior to when we, you know, when we did the name change, I know that, once again, the southern end of the campus was the redheaded stepchild. Not all the uniforms were replaced. Some sports had to go out on their own and raise money to purchase new uniforms because the money was not there to replace the uniforms needed with the name change. Some of the uniforms even had to have patches put over the name because they did not have the money to purchase a branded uniform. So we covered the SJ up with an MV. So that's a little bit, it's frustrating for us on the southern campus. And as far as racism goes, I've worked in the concession stand since Charles Street took over. It's been kind of my thing. I enjoy doing it. I see a lot of kids. I don't see the racism. I worked under Stonewall Jackson, and I'm now under Mountain View. But I can tell you, when the name change was going down the first time, my son, who played three sports, he's a three-sport athlete, was called White Trash, a cracker, from other schools in the county that he, that he was friends with prior to the whole debacle of the name change. So it was reverse racism on my son, who was, obviously, he is white. But I can also tell you really quickly, well, I'm gonna run out of time, but thank you.
Dorian Langston, you have the privilege of being the last speaker.
So you guys know me very well. I probably don't need this, but it's very ironic that Jessica brought up the fact that we are standing, all of us, who has had our voices heard, in a gentleman's building named after a gentleman who owned slaves. None of us have seen to have problems out of that. We've all been okay tonight. We've all said our piece, and we've all said what we had to say, which was, it's very funny that we've heard a lot about racism and that our Black Americans have experienced so much racism. Let me give you a quick story. My daughter was in fifth grade. She was at North Fork, which was not named by a Confederate soldier, North Fork Middle School. She is now in seventh grade. When the Black Lives Matter movement hit, one of the teachers put up a sign that said Black Lives Matter. The children, the black children walked around, well, everybody talked to everybody today, but the black, I'm not referring to you, I'm just saying, the black, there was a black, there was a black child walking around North Fork Middle School saying white lives did not matter. Then the Hispanic kids started joining in, and another teacher had to go into that teacher's classroom and tear the sign down because they were told that white children did not matter. Racism is everywhere. It's not just whites who we've heard for the last two months that whites are racist. I heard a comment out of someone today saying the fact that a gentleman that just spoke said they're racist, and they pointed at him as they walked down the aisle just about 10 minutes ago. So I'm telling you, it's not a, it's, racism is taught. Point blank period, racism is taught. And the thing of it is, is, is whites are not racist. Have we been, we have been pegged that we are just because we want our name back on a school. You know, the thing of it is, is, is blacks are racist against whites just as well as they say we are against them. Racism is taught, and nobody is, you know, every, racism's taught. It has nothing to do with the school name.
When I said that was the last speaker, I lied. I forgot that we had John Masood here earlier and couldn't give his statement, and his representative from his district is going to read his statement.
As everyone now is well aware, on May ninth, the Shenandoah County School Board is going to vote on whether or not to once again name Stonewall Jackson High School Stonewall Jackson High School. Those who are against changing the name of Stonewall High School back talk about how doing so will be so horrible to children of color who may be offended by the concept of going to a school named after both an American and Virginia hero. They also talk about the need for racial healing. Very unfortunately, the actions of those who want Stonewall High School to have its name stay as it is are everything but healing. All one needs to do is go to the Northern Virginia Daily Blogs and see the hatred in their comments. Anyone who doesn't agree with them is a racist, a Nazi, a bigot, et cetera. As a non-white, I find it both humorous and insulting to have lily-white, lily-skinned white folks label me as a racist or a bigot. Me, I happen to understand that Stonewall Jackson was a rather pivotal figure in Shenandoah Valley history, and thus, thus the name should return to Stonewall High School. Those people who supported the original name change a few years back did no talking to the average person in Shenandoah County and thus really are not able to understand that the average resident of Shenandoah County is not a racist. And they very, very likely had an ancestor who fought under Stonewall at one time or another. To support Stonewall Jackson is not racist. For the average resident here, who again has not one racial bone inside their body, they are celebrating their ancestors and their heritage. To suggest that everyone who supports the name change is a racist is to state that almost everyone who lives inside Shenandoah County is a racist, something that is ridiculous. Are there racists in Shenandoah County? Yes. Is racism aberrant? Yes. Should we do everything we can to eradicate racism? Yes.
Mike, that's, time is up.
That was from John Masood, the chairman of the Sixth Congressional District, Republican Party of Virginia.
All right, that concludes the, the public comments. I'm gonna ask the board one more time. Uh, we are ready to move on to consent agenda and then eventually action items. I'm ready to entertain, though, a short recess before we take up the rest of the agenda. Do I have such a motion?
I move to recess for 10 minutes.
I second.
We have a motion and a second that we recess for 10 minutes. We will do so.
I'm good. Well, I didn't drink anything between the last one and this one. Yeah, it's very. He was over there.
I can't believe we're doing this in 2024. All right, I'm Katie Frekley, resident District Three, and I'm really sorry. I'm nervous. I don't usually get nervous speaking up, but this, this makes me nervous. Earlier this evening, with a shaky voice, I had to tell my teenage son that I would be home late tonight because I had to do my part. He knows why. We talk about it. We talk about why it's important for him to do his part, too. We have to talk about it. It's the only way to break the cycle of systemic racism. It's the only way for him to know right from wrong. It's the only way he'll learn that it's shameful to make excuses for unkind behavior, excuses like hiding behind a propagated faulty process as a means of justifying the continuation of systemic racism. After listening and reflecting on everything I've heard tonight, I think my comments are less for the board and more for the community that now includes our national and global friends. I just want to say to the people of Shenandoah County, if this board chooses to move us backwards, I'm begging that the community keep pushing forward. Don't give up. Don't give up fighting for what's right. Don't hide behind cowardly excuses.
Hey there.
You can have tomorrow off or you can sleep in.
I don't think, we've got to go. Four of us have to go to Northern Virginia for training from one to four. So, yeah, but still, yeah.
Where is your visitor?
Exit 66, off of 66. I think it's, is it Falls Church, Everdeen High School? Yeah.
Traffic comes back.
So I have an EZ Pass. I need to make sure we have money on it. Because it's taken out the window and put it in our car, so. Hi, Dan. How are you? Good late evening. It's a late evening.
I bet Gloria would be done by 10:30.
Oh, I said three, so maybe sometime in between.
She said 11:00.
Yeah, she's gonna be closer. It's about 11:10 now, so. I didn't clap this time.
Oh.
I'm so proud of myself. I'm so proud of myself. I gave a speech at Little Ridge last night, and I probably clapped probably 500 times. Because you clap for all the kids we come up, twice.
What are we gonna hear about that?
Yeah.
I think we're about top.
He's not warm.
No? No, I was shaken earlier. I don't know if it was nerves or if I was cold.
Right now, I was like shaking, you know, like, oh, God.
It could be nerves.
I think it's both, yeah.
But my hands are cold.
It was good to walk around, shake it off.
Yeah.
All right, let's go.
So there are 400.
Please have a seat as quickly as you can. All right, in just a few minutes, we will begin with the consent agenda. There is one item I'd like to take care of before we do that. And a board member was called out specifically during the Q and As. He did not respond to the point, which he was not supposed to, and so he didn't. But he has asked for a chance now to respond. I have consulted with the parliamentarian who feels that it's proper to do so. So I'm going to allow school board member Tom Street to respond to a comment that was made about him during the public comments. So Mr. Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I just wanted to point out that the fact is that the false accusation that was made against me is not true. During that time period, if it happened, they've got the wrong street, and that street is deceased now. So I just wanted to make that clear. And that's backed up, that I said that it was handled by the administration. I was only handled by the administration one time at Stonewall Jackson High School, and that was by Jerry Dobell being tardy to Mrs. Pan's biology class. So they have the wrong street. Thank you.
All right. We are going to consider the consent agenda right now. We have a number of items under the agenda which the school board has reviewed, such things as the last few minutes, approval of bills paid, donations, overnight field trips, et cetera. And I am ready to accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as it has been delivered to us. And all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. We're gonna move into the instructional agenda. And we're gonna hear about the summer school information from Ms. Proctor and Mr. Hensley.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Shepherd. Thank you for giving Jennifer and I an opportunity to give you a brief overview of our summer school coming up and a little bit of tease of what the students are gonna be doing during that time. We have teachers every year help collaborate and build our curriculum for our summer school that supports our standards of learning in English and math. And then we also have some staff that help run that as administrators during the time. So we're really appreciative of the teachers that have worked to develop this up to this point, and we're proud of the things that they have our students during the summer.
Okay. Can you hear me? I don't know. Okay, so we have, summer school dates are June 3rd through the 28th. Teacher hours are 8:15 to 3:15, and then student hours are 8:30 to 3:00. And then we are serving breakfast and lunch every day, and that is free of charge for our students. And our class sizes in summer school are significantly smaller. They're usually around 10 to 12 students in each class. Some might be a little smaller, some maybe a little bigger, because it just depends on how that, the students that sign up and the need of each grade level in those schools.
So based on the students that sign up, which there are approximately every year about 90 per campus that sign up, we have transportation. That transportation is limited. It goes to certain spots based on what parents request. It's not feasible to run from house to house during that time, because obviously if there's only 90 students attending on the campus, you would be running a lot of roads to be able to get to all those students. So we collect that information. Our principals right now are working with teachers to collect information and get that from our parents.
So just to give you some insight as to what our theme this year is for elementary, it's actually the same for middle school as well, but it is Career Quest: Exploring Paths to Success. And so this year, our students will be exploring various career paths and businesses within our community. We have guest speakers lined up from different professions. And just to name one of them, we're having some guest speakers from JMU coming to talk about the advancement of sustainable energy. We also have field trips planned, and we're going to places such as the Explorer Museum, the Discovery Museum, Plainview Farms, the Limestone, I'm not sure if I'm saying this right, Carmuse Lime and Stone, downtown Woodstock businesses and town offices, and the Seven Bend State Park are some of the places we're going. But our program isn't just about the field trips and the guest speakers, it's also about academic growth. We are gonna be working on foundational skills in English and math, and our students will have remedial instruction that's tailored for each one of their needs. So we'll have a hands-on blend of activities, project-based learning, engaging experiments, and our aim is to reinforce these essential skills while fostering a love for learning.
So at the middle school level, we include 5th grade, and they don't have to stay at the elementary level. That is a transition for them to help with the process of transitioning to the middle school. At the middle school level, we're gonna do multiple things that include project-based learning, such as Jennifer spoke, focuses around literacy, English and math skills, and also about creating, building, and exploring during that time. And there's field trips. Some people say, well, you take field trips. Why field trips? Field trips are to really tie the curriculum to real life. We want to bring what we're teaching alive to our students so that they see the importance of it and why they're learning it in school. So at the middle school, the four weeks that they're in are gonna focus on those careers in Virginia. The first week, they're gonna focus on agriculture and food, where they're gonna end up being an agriculture reporter that they have to write and report out. The second week, they're doing visual arts, and they're gonna end up doing visual arts. They're gonna go, and they're gonna create a book, or they're gonna create some type of media that's gonna be presented. So they're gonna use their skills in English language arts to do that when they do it. Third week is gonna be agriculture, hospitality, and tourism. This is where they'll take a trip out to Bryce to see how that runs. And then they're gonna have to plan their own event, do their own budget, and do their own media marketing for their event that they're gonna hold. The last week and the fourth week, they're gonna do health and public safety. They're gonna take a trip to the Conicville Fire Department, they're gonna go to the Luray Zoo, but they're gonna use all their skills that they used from Week 1, Week 2, and Week 3 to build a game to include students in how they can find a career that they like best. Oh, yeah, sorry, high school. How about you? So at high school, it's 9 through 12, and it's recovery for credits. And we do that for English, math, science, and history. And that's done through an online program, Apex, that we have a teacher that will work with them through that process. But it's recovery-based for credits. Any questions?
Is there an application process or something that the students need to go through to get into the summer program?
So our principals, along with our teachers, identify students that would qualify for this. So if some of our students are needing some extra help in literacy and math, and that's how we contact their parents, we send them a letter. Sometimes we reach out by phone. If we don't get responses, also.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to the informational agenda. We are going to hear about a request to increase the fiscal year 2024 food service budget. Ms. Stein.
I guess I'm gonna hold it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The Food Service Fund received an award notification from the National School Lunch Program Equipment Assistance Grant for school nutrition in the amount of $5,535. This is a federal reimbursement grant and will be used to replace a two-door reach-in refrigerator at Honey Run Elementary School. And that's how the grant was written, so that's why it's specific to that school. It will be, they're restricted, and the reimbursement process is gonna actually happen this fiscal year, so it will be shown on your, as an action item later on in this agenda. Any questions?
There's one.
All right, the next one. So the Shenandoah Community Foundation is home of the Bowman Shannon Cultural Arts Fund. The purpose of these funds is to educate, guide, stimulate the enjoyment and participation in cultural arts in Shenandoah County, Virginia. Staff have been in discussions with the foundation and have submitted an application for funding from the Bowman Shannon Cultural Arts in the amount of $150,000. The request, if awarded, will be used to upgrade the sound systems at each of the three high schools. And this will help enhance the success of the performances and better showcase the talents of our students. If approved, these funds will likely be received prior to June 30th of 2024, and therefore you will see this also as an action item this evening. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ash. We're moving on to personnel items. Discuss the personnel decisions that we made or discussed earlier. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel list as it has been presented?
I move to approve the personnel list as presented.
You're second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Carlinio. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 6.2, policy updates. The background on this issue is that we received a briefing from Dr. Heingartner, the Policy Committee did. And there were, I'm trying to think, 41 policies that were presented to us to be reviewed. And you should know that our, we have to review these policies once every couple of years, and the time for this review came up. The Policy Committee's job is to review. And Mrs. Rutz and I have been on that committee, and we have looked over these 41. We've also had these on our board docs for the last two months. Have invited school board members to peruse and review that. And so I think we are ready to accept the proposed motion for accepting those recommendations. Do we have such a motion?
I move that the February 20, oh, sorry. I move that the February 2024 policy updates, 1 through 41, as presented to the school board, be accepted as presented with the understanding that policy number 25, which is policy IKB for homework, be redrafted in a collaborative process between the is policy IKB for homework, be redrafted in a collaborative process between the Shandau County School Board and the central office staff, um, and then presented to the school board for action. Um, that, that policy, number 25, actually did away completely with the homework policy, um, because...
We need a second.
All right.
Second.
Been a long night.
All right, now we're ready for discussion. Mrs. Rutz.
I'm sorry. Long night. Um, the policy itself did away with homework, um, because it wasn't legally, it wasn't lawfully required. I just kind of struggled with that whole concept of, of, I, I don't know whether it meant homework is not required, or we didn't have any standards for homework. When we, when we send our, our kids out of here to higher education, homework is a part of it. Um, to master anything may require extra efforts and extra work, and I would hate to do away with a policy that might indicate that we don't have a standard for either giving homework, doing homework, or what's expected. So, um, I'd like to see that reworked and kept.
I have, I have a comment too about that. The, um, the way it was presented to us, uh, from, uh, VSPA was that the policy of, of giving homework is not, not, um, legally required. So the code does not, and, and VDOE does not require that homework be given. But we felt that that's the one policy blip that we wanted to hold back and to work with the, um, with the central staff, because we believe that under certain circumstances, homework is indeed a robust, uh, and a rewarding thing to do, and wanted to make sure that by deleting that concept, or believing, by deleting that policy, that it would be sending a message that we thought it was not appropriate to assign homework. And we believe that in many circumstances, it not only is the right thing to do, but getting students ready to do independent research, et cetera, et cetera, uh, probably depends on it. So we did discuss with, um, with Dr. Heingartner, the, um, the ability to coordinate kind of redrafting this with the help of the central staff, and then, uh, running it by the, by the board when that's done for, for final approval. So, um, over the next several months, we'll be working on, on the policy, uh, that'll be developed in collaboration between the school board and between the central staff. So that's the intent of the motion. I wanted to make sure that the school board members understands that before we vote. Is, does anybody on the school board have anything further to say about that topic? All right. With, uh, with that in mind, I'm going to ask that if you approve of the, uh, the approval of those 41 policy updates, with the exception of number 25, policy IKB, which is going to be redrafted in the collaborative process I've just described, please, uh, please indicate by saying, uh, aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, um, that motion carries. The next action item is the food service, uh, explanation of the food service award, and, um, we have, uh, we've, we've heard about the National School Lunch Program Equipment Assistance Grant, and, uh, so we need a motion to approve the request to increase the 2024 food service budget by the $5,535 as presented. Do we have such a motion?
I move to approve the request to increase the fiscal year 2024 food service budget by $5,535 as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Rickert. Any second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Carlinio. That is, uh, second. Any discussion? If none, uh, if you approve of the motion, uh, to, um, request, to request the increase, please signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Let the record show that, uh, it was approved by a, um, 6-0 vote. The, um, follow-on, um, action 6.4 is to request the, um, 2024 special budget, uh, by $150,000 as was presented earlier, uh, by Ms. Stein. Do we have a motion to that effect?
I move to approve the request that, the, to, I move to approve the request to increase the FY 2024 special budget by $150,000 as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Rutz. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rickert. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, 6.4 has also been decided by a 6-0 majority. 6.5, the food service contract with, uh, Southwest Food Excellence. We've been discussing this, uh, and I need a motion to, um, approve the food service contract with Southwest Food Excellence.
I move to approve the food service contract with South, Southwest Food Excellence.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion on approving the food service contract? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No? Then the food service contract also passes with a 6-0 majority. The last item for action is the request from the Coalition for Better Schools to restore the school names. There are several suggested motions that have been put forth, and I'm open for motion to that effect.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the names of Stonewall Jackson High School and Ashby Lee Elementary School be restored to the schools now named the Mountain View High School and Honey Run Elementary School respectively. The funds required to implement the restoration must be provided by private donations exclusively and not be borne by the school system or government tax funds through the Shandau County Public School. Will oversee disbursements relating to restoration costs.
Thank you. Mr. Street, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mrs., uh, Carlinio. And we have, we're open for discussion. Um, Mr. Street, uh, as the maker of the motion, I'm going to, um, give you the courtesy of the first, uh, discussion.
Thank you. Um, of course, we heard a lot tonight, obviously. But my take, uh, primarily, primarily is, yes, how it was done in 2020. It was not done right. It was improper, you know, done in a secretive, in only nine days. Part of the seizure, of that procedure, of the policy that is in place is, it is to include part of the local community, which did not take place. It was definitely, like commented before, I agree, a knee-jerk reaction. I was very disappointed in that leadership. I didn't, I think it showed in, um, you know, I hear the comments, the emails. What are we showing our kids? Well, what it definitely showed was the lack of accountability, the lack of respect, the lack of loyalty, integrity. It showed the lack of, of not, um, wanting the community to be involved in it. The topic of the survey has been a big topic, the emails and tonight. And I did a little check on that. Um, the survey that was recently done, District 1 and District 2, once again, because of the lack of the past leadership, they had the opportunity to do a survey for their local community, and they chose not to. So someone did it, and it was done. I've heard a lot about 83% didn't return it, and their voices should be heard. Well, I thought about that. So I thought, well, I'm going to check in the official way. Pretty much know the answer, but I want to do it officially to give an answer tonight. So I checked with the register's office, and I asked Ms. McDonald. I said, in a, in a community vote, whatever you want to call it, but the community vote, what is the minimum number that has to be required to make it an official vote? She said, there is none. There is no minimum number. She said, the answer is officially, the results are determined by those who participate. If you choose not to participate, then that's your choice. And that's that. I also like to say, I, I appreciate everybody speaking tonight. Everybody has a right to speak. But I'm going to say this, and I know some people won't be happy. But the truth is, it comes down, even though you, everybody has a right to speak and voice your opinion, and even though if you're a taxpayer in the county, in my eyes, it comes down to District 1 or District 2, or the boundaries of Southern County campus, it's their school. This has already been shown and proven in 1992, when we had to, we combined, when the, when they combined Tom's Brook Elementary School and Strasburg Middle School. And I believe that was a pretty big fiasco, but I don't recall much of it, because even being a taxpayer, I didn't really care, because it was their school. I didn't, I didn't want to be a part of it. Let them decide. I don't care if they called our school Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory. Didn't matter to me. Their school, let them decide. And that's how it went down. They polled the northern end of the camp, that northern end of the county, and that's how it should have been done. So yes, my take is, it is up to, ultimately, when it comes down to it, the District 1 and District 2 citizens. And I was going to say this, but it was said at the very end of the comments. I thought it was very ironic that we're here in a school right now, the name of this school inside of the building. The man owned about 90 more slaves than Thomas Jackson did, and I haven't heard one controversy over the name of this school. So I wonder, why is there a big controversy at another school? I'll pass it on to those right now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Street. Other member comments? Mrs. Carlinio.
Well, thank you all for being here tonight, and, uh, I really do appreciate all your comments, and, um, I'd be very happy to name the school Children of God High School if that was really an option, but, um, my decision to vote, uh, for restoring the names of Stonewall Jackson High School and Ashby Lee Elementary simply comes down to the process of how the names were changed in the first place, which I know a lot of people have dismissed. Um, but I have studied the timeline of the events as well as the evidence extensively, and to me, there is absolutely no question that it was done intentionally in the space of about seven days during the 4th of July weekend and under the cover, uh, cover of COVID to ignore the feedback from the community. This was not an innocent mistake by some inexperienced school board. No, this was the carefully choreographed machinations of a school board colluding to ignore the people they represented. This is what political indoctrination in our schools look like. If you had any doubts about that, just listen to their own words on emails obtained from a FOIA request. Uh, one is from, uh, the chairman of the board to the then superintendent Mark Johnston. Um, this is from Karen Wetzel. And one of the things she said is, as Cindy says, "Once he knows it is on the agenda, a lot of others will know. Not trying to be secretive, but to condense the time, the folks contact us." There was another comment from board member Cindy Walsh, which was, uh, the email was named, "Sorry for the delay, I like the wording," and this is a quote. "Just got off the phone with board member Shelby and board member Andrew Keller. Both are firmly on the yes category for renaming. Shelby is ready to do it in July. Andrew is hesitant about the timing because he worries that the public will be angry that we rushed it through without giving them the chance to weigh in. I joked that it only took four days for the whole county to know about the reopening plan, and he laughed." This isn't funny. It is unacceptable. It is political indoctrination by a minority imposing their ideology on the majority, and it is our job to fix that. Now, some people have tried to argue that even if the process was flawed, we should ignore it in favor of the outcome. That is wrong. Not only does the end not justify the means, but the process is an integral part in our nation of laws. In fact, a lot of people here keep mentioning, um, the decision about Brown versus Board of Education. That was a Supreme Court decision that overturned Plessy versus Ferguson, which actually was the one that says separate but equal. So this is how we do it through the process. This is how the process is important. So even when you say Board of, uh, uh, Brown versus Board of Education, you're saying that the process is important. Ignoring this would only encourage other rogue boards to act against the wishes of their constituents with the hope that their mistakes are ignored and never rectified. Instances like this erode the citizens' trust in our governmental system and must never be accepted. So for this reason alone, regardless of surveys, I will vote to rectify a situation that clearly violated our citizens' rights and divided our community as nothing else has. And this decision is very much in tune with the desires of my constituents in District 3, who have overwhelmingly voiced their desire to change the names back. As for those who are concerned, we're working, uh, to draft a policy in the future that will actually take the community into consideration, um, if this issue ever comes back again. Uh, but I also want to address the inflammatory rhetoric and the name-calling that we have been hearing from those against restoring the names. Specifically, I want to talk about the ugly accusations of racism and even white supremacy. I've heard from hundreds of people, and not once have I witnessed any instances of racism coming from those who want to restore the names. In fact, we heard today about a false accusation so egregious that the person should probably be sued for slander. It is not just a name-calling and the basis accusations, but the absurdity of some of these claims. And let's not forget that the names were originally changed for incidents that happened in a different state, not for anything that happened here. And out of all the different absurd comments that I got, uh, emails about, perhaps the most absurd was the one that came, that, and I got this more than once, asking me to put myself in the shoes of blacks or Hispanics. Yes, some people actually asked me, a Hispanic woman born and raised in Puerto Rico in a middle-class family whose first language is Spanish, to put myself in the shoes of a Hispanic. This type of condescension and ignorance may work on others, but it's not going to work with me. And as a side note, for those using the term Latinx, just please stop. That term is not just universally hated by most Hispanics. It is also insulting, as it is a term we associate with white woke people trying to impose that their made-up name on us. It is a term that implies that our language and our culture, which has been here, been here since before this country was formed, is somehow defective, and we need a white person to come and fix it for us. But I digress. Then there are the comments calling Hispanics ignorant for not agreeing with those wanting to keep the current names. Take, for example, this quote, which I will keep anonymous, and this is a quote, "You know very well that it is now fewer blacks in the district and that the other people of color, including Hispanics, probably don't really understand that they fall into this minority group too. My guess is that they are not that knowledgeable about this issue enough to know, so they probably didn't get a survey, and if they did, probably didn't understand what is really going on with their schools. I hope that at least they know that they are in the minority too, but not treated quite as bad as blacks." End of quote. In other words, because we choose not... In other words, because we choose not to be victims and be offended by everything, we must be ignorant. Now, I don't know what it's like to be black in America. Frankie, I don't know what it's like to be black, white, Appalachian, Asian, or even Mexican, Argentinian, or Cuban. But I do know what it is to be the subject of prejudice and discrimination for being Puerto Rican. I know what it's like to be told, "Speak English, you're in America," when you're a kid talking to your mom or your little brother. Heck, I know what it's like to have a group of men throw a book back in your table and make the same demand when you're just minding your own business and having a nice lunch with your friend at college. I also know what it's like to be denied a job because of my accent. I know what it's like to have to defer going to college, even after graduating with high honors, because the college wouldn't process my financial aid papers unless I provided a green card, something I never had because I was a born U.S. citizen, just with my parents and my grandparents before me. And I certainly know when people much less educated than I am question my achievements, like my legal degree, as the head of the local Democrat Party did right before this board at the last meeting. These achievements were not the product of any affirmative action programs, but of my own hard work and the sacrifice, including working two or three jobs at a time. I had help from no one other than my almighty God. The difference, again, is that I choose not to be a victim. It is probably safe to say that most Hispanics, like so many other ethnic and immigrant groups before us, choose to work harder and not let the ignorance of others affect us. These struggles can either make us victims who obsess on grievances, or they can make us stronger and wiser. I choose the latter. I choose to fight harder. And when you obsess mostly on grievances, your goal becomes making sure that those grievances stay at the top of the list. I've been listening to this, "We are more oppressed than you are" rhetoric for decades. But here's a not-so-fun fact. While Puerto Ricans have been U.S. citizens for over one hundred years, fought for the United States in every single world conflict. In fact, my grandmother lost four siblings in the wars. We still have no congressional representation with the vote, and we still can't vote for the President of the United States. That is the definition of a second-class citizen. Yet rather than complain and live miserable lives, I thank God every day that most Puerto Ricans choose not to become victims, but to overcome the adversities. Now, I understand that many of those claiming racism probably have their heart in the right place and mean well, but are just grossly misinformed and misled by those who seek division to strengthen their political ideology while weakening our country. That same ideology, victimizing people of color and finding racism everywhere, is the same ideology that has taken God out of the public square, that wants us to believe that a biological boy can become a girl, and that we should open our borders to all, which incidentally adversely affects the Hispanic community most of all. And what has this victimization accomplished? Racial divisions among blacks and whites are about as bad as they have been since desegregation, despite the fact that we've had a black president, a black attorney general, and some of our richest billionaires are in fact black. Is that what oppression looks like? It's ironic that the country where black people have made the most strides in the world is also the one accused of being the most racist. Just today, there was a story of a sixteen-year-old boy in North Carolina who is suing his school district after he was suspended for three days for using the term "illegal alien" when asking his teacher about an assignment. But that's not the only absurd part of it, and I'm quoting from the article. "After the boy asked his teacher the question, a student of Latino descent jokingly said that he was going to kick his you-know-what. Although class proceeded normally, both students were eventually pulled out of the classroom to address the exchange. The Latino student reportedly told the administrator that he was not offended by the other boy's comments. And both teens agreed that there were no hard feelings. But the boy was still suspended for three days and wasn't able to appeal this punishment anyways." So who exactly benefits from situations like this? Only those on the left who seek to divide us and weaponize our differences. The same people who are just angry that finally Americans are starting to wake up and fight back. It is not lost in me, though, that the majority of the people hoping to keep their current names and making the accusations of racism and white supremacy are also the same ones who support and vote for the current president of the White House, a man known for his support of segregation and opposition to busing, who complained about not wanting his kids to grow up in a racial jungle and who referred to Barack Obama as the, quote, "The first sort of mainstream African-American who is articulate and bright and clean." End of quote. He also not long ago referred to black families as predators, who are too sociopathic to be rehabilitated.
So, one second. So, Gloria, you're running kind of along here, and that's okay. Except I want other members to be able to speak, and then we'll come back around for any other comments.
Just finish it up? Okay.
Yeah, is that okay? Okay, so, other comments from the board?
I appreciate everybody that's come out. You know, this is my second year on the board. And we tried to address this last year with the survey. And, you know, I listened to everyone this evening. And some of you stood here last year and was happy when we had a three-three vote to shoot down the survey. There's been several of you come up and talk about the flag and what that means. And yet, miss the complete fact and the complete premise and the foundation of the country, which stands on rights and government, transparency in government. We threw Tiana Harbor over being represented in government. I heard something here earlier. I'm gonna read a quote. It was August twenty-second, eighteen sixty-two. If you don't know who Horace Greeley is, he was a New York Tribune writer, very influential at the time, and a friend of Abraham Lincoln's. "I would save the Union. I would save it in the shortest way under the Constitution. The sooner the national authority can be restored, the nearer the Union will be, the Union as it was. If there be those who would not save the Union unless they could at the same time save slavery, I do not agree with them. If there be those who would not save the Union unless they at the same time could destroy slavery, I do not agree with them." My paramount objective in this struggle is to save the Union. And it's not either to save or destroy slavery. If I could save the Union without freeing any slave, I would do it. If I could save it by freeing all the slaves, I would do that. And if I could save it by freeing some of the slaves, and by freeing all the slaves, if I could save it by freeing some of the slaves and leaving others alone, I would also do that. What I would do about slavery and the color of race, I'd do because I believe it helps save the Union. And what I forbear, I forbear because I do not believe it would help save the Union. "I shall do what less, do less whenever I believe what I'm doing hurts the cause, and I should do more whenever I believe doing more will help the cause. And I shall try to correct errors when shown to be errors, and I shall adopt new views as fast as they shall appear to be true views." History is sticky. And a bunch of you down here were okay with having a school named after Abraham Lincoln, who was a vast politician, not unlike today's politician. He talked out of both sides of his mouth. For me, I stood up here on the last break and listened to a few of you come up here talking about how you felt wronged. Mr. Rickert here read one of his constituents' emails. That quick, you were up here. The name changed in six days over a holiday weekend, violating Virginia FOIA laws. Now, you in identity politics can call me racist without ever talking to me. You can disagree with whatever the vote is tonight, but you won't come up here and say, "Brandy, you weren't transparent, and you didn't give me a voice." I wish we could come up with something that worked for everybody. I do. And I wish the process four years ago wasn't what it was. And to deny it and to say, "Well, too damn bad, move on," is wrong. Your rights under that flag mean something. It's the foundation of this country. And if you keep pushing people off the back of the bus, eventually, you're the only one here. So let me offer my apologies now. It was done incorrectly. The imagined culture where I heard this evening started four years ago. The fact that many of you "come-hers," that you hate to be called, came here, stayed, and fell in love with the place as Stonewall Jackson High School stood on the side of the building. You made it your home. You didn't find offense enough to pack up and go on. And we've been killing the economy here for years. You keep voting for the same people. Identity politics gets nowhere. It does nothing. And it's on both sides of the fence. I'm reading a book by Clarence Thomas. It's called "My Grandfather's Son." One of his biggest things of growing up in the deep South and becoming the, and truly enduring the racism that he did in that time, one of his proudest moments was when somebody you went to school with at a all-white Catholic school said, "You know, I appreciate that I've gotten to know you as an individual and not as a collective. I hope that at some point, some of us can move on and do the same thing."
Mr. Rickert?
First off, I'd like to applaud all the students that have stayed tonight, that have gotten up and spoke. That took a lot of courage. And I applaud you guys for being involved. It takes a lot. I've only been on the school board since January, but over the last year, when I was campaigning, I made sure to attend every school board meeting so that I could see if there was any conflict with my family. And over that time, I would get up and speak about things that I felt passionate about. And my voice would shake. It's hard when you're trying to be honest and you're trying to do the right thing. So I gotta applaud you guys. You guys did a phenomenal job tonight. That being said, I've been contacted by multiple people, media, everything else, asking me about how I feel about tonight's vote. And one thing about being in this position is I was elected by the people for the people. It's not about the way I feel, and that's my response to them. I could vote the way I feel, but many people wouldn't be happy with me because I'm not representing them. I was put here to represent everybody. That being said, I was reviewing the policy on the school names because I thought about it. And I represent District Six, which is the town of Stralsburg. And I thought to myself, would the town of Stralsburg would want people from Mount Jackson or Conneville having a say in the name of our school or in the name of our choice for mascot? And I don't think the people of Stralsburg would. So I went back, and I reviewed our policy, which was in place when this was done four years ago. And if you go to the third paragraph in the policy, it says, "In fulfilling this responsibility, the board shall make every effort to respect the preference of the local school community. However, final decision on the naming of school facilities and the dedicating of areas of school facilities or grounds shall rest entirely with the board." From what I saw and from what I heard when this all took place, nobody from that local community was heard. And just for the record, everybody that's reached out to me over email, there was no way I could respond to all of them. So I didn't respond to any of them. But I have every single one of your names right here, whatever ties you to Shenandoah County. I was going through it as you were coming up to speak. I could tell which way you were gonna speak before you spoke because I read all your emails. There's two-hundred-and-sixty names here. And like I said, if you wanna reach out to me after this meeting before we leave, you give me your name. I'll tell you which way you wanted me to vote. But I can tell you right now that I had a hundred-and-eighteen of you vote to keep the names the way they are, but I had a hundred-and-forty-four of you ask to restore the names. Now, that being said, there's people from all kinds of places in here. Some of them didn't even put where they were from, but I can tell you there was one in here from Nashville, Tennessee. To me, like I said, it says in our policy that it should be left up to the local community. Now, I did have one parent from my district reach out to me because their student goes to Massanutton Regional Governor's School. And that gave me a lot to think about because I hadn't thought about that before. So immediately, I thought to myself, I thought, "Well, they have their own name. It's Massanutton Regional Governor's School." But then I started thinking about it more, and I'm like, when they were at Triplet, there was no issue. And yet, at Triplet, he was a slave owner as well. And there was no request to change the name at Triplet. So I think all of this was politically driven. It was kinda ironic, because I'll close in this. I didn't mean to go this long. But I'm a Bible-believing Christian. And when I was on my way here tonight, I would give you the shirt off my back. I love everybody as my own. I treat everybody like I wanna be treated. And when I was here, on my way here, I thought it was ironic because I was making sure everybody that emailed me, their voice was heard. And this person sent me an email as I was praying, coming down the road. I'm like, "God, give me the words to say. Open my eyes, open my ears. This person sent me this, and I'd just like to read it to you." I'm not gonna identify the person. They know who they are. But she wrote, "A brief note to tell each of you that you are being remembered in prayer tonight. And in forthcoming days, this has been a troubling journey for everyone, regardless of each individual's personal stance on the matter. I'm asking God to grant each of you strength and wisdom as you make the final decision. May God grant all petitioners the grace and maturity to accept whatever will be and move forward peacefully. No one should have been left holding the bag and finding themselves in this predicament, but here we are. Lord, with your infinite love and wisdom, guide and protect our seven representatives, as well as everyone in attendance. Fill our hearts with respect, dignity, and honor for each one's personal opinions and beliefs. Help us navigate any rough seas which we may possibly encounter. Help all of us honor your name by remaining calm, using common sense, showing respect, courtesy, and empathy toward one another. We are a Christian people and proud Virginians. We represent your beautiful Shenandoah Valley and its place in the struggle of building these United States of America. I ask for peace and healing in our communities and beyond. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen." That struck a nerve with me on the way here. I'm like, here I am, saying my own prayer, talking to God, and this comes across the email. As soon as I get in the parking lot, I'm reading it. No matter which way the vote goes tonight, I ask that all of you respect one another. Let's find what unites us again. And whichever way it goes, if you feel like you've got the names to petition us to change the names one way or another, I implore you to follow the process. I'm sorry that four years ago, the process wasn't followed. It puts us in a bad position. Two years ago, they could've done the survey, and everything would've been done. That being said, I just hope all of us can leave here tonight respecting one another and loving one another. We're all Shenandoah County residents. Thank you.
I'd like to begin by acknowledging the meeting tonight and the folks that have come together to speak on this. the meeting tonight and, and the folks that have come together to speak on this topic. Clearly a very difficult and divisive matter that we've, we've been on now for two to four years. You know, we've talked about the right way, the wrong way to do it, the right thing to do, the wrong thing to do. Things like this really come down to perspective and, and how you, how you view things. And like it's been said up here tonight, we've received a ton of feedback, whether it's in person, whether it's phone calls, texts, emails, everything. There's been plenty of feedback and I think that's one thing that we can say is there's been some sort of a process this time around. We've heard the community. We're hearing perspectives from both sides of this issue. But at the end of the day, like it's been said, we're all a community. You know, these are tough decisions. We're elected, we're, we're put up here to make these tough decisions. And obviously, this is a very difficult one. The way I look at it and from my viewpoint, we all have our own constituents. And, you know, we, overall, at least I did, I've received a, a majority from this county overall to change the names back. My district has not been the same. You know, two years ago, when I voted to change the names back, the outcome and the feedback that I received was quite different. I would say time has gone on and some people just don't care anymore, especially in Woodstock because it's not directly related to the Southern campus, which is understandable. But there are still a lot of people out there that care about it. And, you know, we talked about the, the surveys. Well, the first survey and the only one, I guess, that we ever got results from, you know, it's been trying to, people have tried to put it on us that, that we're using that as our only data point. And, you know, I'm gonna speak for myself, but I don't think anybody else is solely basing their decision-making on a survey that received 1,300, um, people responding or whatever, respondents. I do wish, you know, because there was another survey that was conducted a couple of weeks ago, I wish we would've gotten results from that. That was a county-wide survey. I don't know who, you know, we talk about the whole, uh, no one wants to identify themselves, but that survey was anonymous as well. But I think the more you have, the more data you have, the better decision you can make for, for the community. And it's unfortunate because that was county-wide and unfortunately, we didn't get those results for whatever reason. I'm not gonna speculate on that. But again, ultimately, for me, it's a very tough decision because I have my own thoughts and beliefs on certain matters. My district has been overwhelmingly in support of retaining the names the way they are. You know, I've talked to people, and you can make the argument, well, those people probably didn't vote for me anyways. Well, you know, I've talked to people in my inner circles and people around the community that I agree with and I may not agree with on anything. And as far as my district goes, like I said, the connection is not the same as it is with the Southern campus. Because, you know, even for me, I don't have that same connection. I can't speak to it. But I know that I trust people and I understand the perspective that that's their identity, and I completely understand that. I just know that, for me, I've always talked about democracy and listening to the people. And we know in 2020, at least in multiple districts, clearly, the, the popular opinion or majority wasn't heard. And I'm not willing to do that same thing and be a hypocrite like some were in 2020 and ignore the majority. So it's a difficult decision, like I said. I've thought about it for a long time. There's been a lot of input. And I understand both sides to this. But ultimately, I believe that the people of District Four, where we're sitting in right now, those that felt that they wanted to reach out to me, they expressed their thoughts and feelings. And I don't feel like I would be doing my job properly if I sat here and ignored them, even if I didn't necessarily agree with what they were expressing to me. So always multiple perspectives of things, and that's just kind of how I've dealt with it. I don't judge anybody or just, you know, look down on anybody for the decision they're making tonight. It's a complex issue. We've heard plenty of feedback and we'll be voting on it soon. So those are my thoughts.
Just in terms of process, so what I'm probably gonna do is, Gloria, I'll, I'll pass it to you in just a few minutes, finish up any of your comments. And then, Mr. Street, I'll give you the courtesy of a final word. And so I guess it's, it's my turn to speak. So I'm the geezer up here. I'm 78 years old. And so I remember 1959 not as the, as the, as an era of, what's it called, massive resistance? Is that it? Is that, is that okay? And by the way, I've learned about, about that. I've listened to you. I, I've listened to some of the, and I, I understand some of those things really happened. They're, they're not fiction, that there were people using the schools and so forth at that, at that point for kind of a last-ditch effort to save what, what they saw as their, their old world. But I, I'll tell you, as a, as a 13, 14-year-old at the time, I was just, you know, it was the time of the bicentennial, or the, excuse me, the centennial of the Civil War. And it was a big deal. I remember as a, as a child, there were the last few veterans who were still alive. And I was like four or five years old. I used to see pictures of them and they'd have these reenactments and they'd come together. It was mind-boggling for me as a little kid to see that. But that war was perhaps the seminal event in our nation's history. More people died in that war than any other war we've ever had. And for people to Shenandoah Valley to tell me, you know, that, that only the Confederates were the ones who did nasty things or did nasty things to black people, you're just not reading your history and you're not being realistic. War's hell. Sherman only said it, he did it. But at the same time, we still have, you know, great soldiers, great heroes, great heroines who through that era, through, and, and the post-Civil War era, both races, both nations, and we felt the pain together and we dealt with the pain together. And it, it wasn't just about massive resistance of some diehard racists. And fast forward, got news for you. It's not 1959 anymore. It's not 1861 anymore. Were people systemic racist then? Absolutely. You think it was just Southerners? You think that even abolitionists weren't stuck on their own sense of superiority? This is something we've, we've come to realize recently. What I love about what I've heard, and unfortunately to, to live it, live it the last few weeks, is the whole Christian concept of, you know, universal priesthood, of, of believers. We're all equal. We're in this together. I believe that. It's, it's, it's driven me in my life. I've, um, sorry Gloria, I talk about my career. I've spent 29 years doing international diplomacy and doing international military diplomatic work. I've, I've saved hundreds of thousands of children in Haiti. I've worked in Burundi. We've delivered programs to Jordan, to Colombia. I mean, when I was at JMU and, and did this stuff, and when I was in the Army, saving Kurds and Kurdistan and Iraqis. And it was the greatest meritocracy that ever lived or ever existed for me because I had comrades who were black and white, and I served under and over both of them, and we were just soldiers. And that's, to me, what the Civil War is all about. I mean, do you think, when I was 12 or 13, we ran around saying, "I'm a slaver"? We, we weren't thinking about that. And so when I see people don't even know me and accuse me of being a racist because I have this one position, you didn't tell me I'm wrong. Yes, I did say I would feel unsettled if I were black and going through this. Are you kidding? Of course I would be. Unsettled, to Gloria's point, doesn't mean that I would, that it would be the most horrible thing that ever happened. I mean, most of the, of the black soldiers that I soldiered with, I don't think that they would think going to Stonewall Jackson High School was the biggest threat that ever happened to that. So the hyperbole here is, is rather, is really rather stunning. Especially when we talk about, I mean, do you realize that civil wars account for about 80% of the conflicts in the world? English have had like five major civil wars. They don't divide themselves from Cavaliers and Roundheads anymore. They're not white roses and red roses anymore. Okay? They, you know, they unified. And by God, that's what we gotta do. That's what we have to do. And so those people who have been calling for kind of a spiritual coming together, I'm right there with you. That, that, that's where I go. But I do say that the way to kill democracy is to say that the ends justify the means. And to say that the things that the, that the school board got away with a few years ago in terms of the, the money that they promised and reneged on, in terms of the close sessions that they had, of icing out one of their members, of doing it under COVID, you're telling me that that's, that that's right? I, I can't accept that. I can't accept it. It has to, there has to be redress to that. And I'll finish by saying this. 29 countries I've done these missions. I've been with Frenchmen. I've been with Germans. I've been with English. I've been with, and then going to all these countries. The most democratic egalitarian people I've ever served with and seen and been with are Americans. Now, you go to Korea, you'll find racists that they hate each other in certain parts of Korea. The Sudan, they hate each other. Racial strife is everywhere. Cultural strife is everywhere. Americans are better than that. We really are. And we have to celebrate that and not divide ourselves along these lines and call each other names without knowing who, who we are. So, um, sorry for long-winded. Over to you, Gloria.
Okay. I just wanna finish up what I was gonna say. Because the truth is that we will never, kind of going back to what all my colleagues are saying, is that we're never gonna achieve racial harmony or any other kind of harmony as long as we insist on keeping these labels and these divisions. What is more, this baseless accusations and name-calling is the opposite, that they create resentment and a racial divide that is becoming really hard and increasingly harder to overcome. So I encourage you to please, if you really wanna stop this racism and prejudice, let's just stop finding racism and prejudice into everything. Not only does it detract from the true cases of racism, which we do know they exist and they need to be addressed, but it perpetuates racial war that has been affecting this country for so long. In the end, like I said, this is, I just wanted to address this, this whole topic of racism because that's what is being brought up over and over today and because that's what I got a lot of emails on. In the end, like I said, this is, for me, and like Chairman Vallow just said, the process is important. I mean, this is what our nation is founded upon. And if the shoe was on the other side and, you know, the, the right had done something like that, that was so outrageous and we had not taken everybody else's opinions into consideration, you would still be complaining about it. So we have to do it the right way. And like I said before, we are gonna, after we do this, um, this vote, I'm hoping in the next few sessions, we're gonna work into actually putting in place a better policy that if in the future we have to deal with this, we are gonna actually have some kind of a referendum or some kind of way to actually ask the people who are affected by those changes for their opinions. So there will be no questions about that in the future.
Mr. Street?
Yes, thank you. To back up what Gloria just said about, yes, we do need to work on the procedure in the near future to, uh, to do that, to make it, you know, to make it better. Before I forget, the other comments that I've heard tonight, you know, the comment expressed of, you know, that, well, the school board should focus on other matters or what they call more important matters. Well, I do have an answer for that, and the answer is, yes, we can, and yes, we are. This board has really been looking into things because we believe in accountability. You know, we're always paying attention. And so we've looked into things and twice, I've heard, when I left somebody's office, and I'm not patting myself on the back, but to answer this topic, to, you know, an answer to this topic that we hear about the board should be concerned about other matters, I hear, "Thank you for coming. You're the first school, school board member that's been here." So we, so the answer, my point is, we are. The other topic, like I said earlier at the last meeting, the issues, actually three issues. I said two, but three. The procedure, the racism, and who the name, who, who this is all about, the character of this individual, Thomas Jackson. And I find it interesting that number two, I guess that's number two, the, the individual, Thomas Jackson, I find it very interesting when you read about this man, who he was, what he stood for, his character, his loyalty, his leadership, how godly man he was. Those standards that he had were much higher than any leadership of the school system in 2020 and are higher than anybody now. But yet, we wanna put that individual down. We don't wanna look at him as a person. I remember the ladies' comment at the last meeting that stuck in my mind. It was so simple, but I always thought about it. In that time, back then, they were fighting, they were protecting and fighting for their home. And that made a lot of sense to me. As far as, I thought it was very interesting, um, the topic racism. And I don't really like to talk about it a lot because I don't believe in it. And I have to say some things that I wasn't gonna say just to back up of earlier comments. But my, it's, but, you know, a lot of people could come up here and talk. But for myself, I experienced it. In 1976, I went to Ashby Lee Elementary School and I was there the whole time. And I said it before, and I know this is kind of embarrassing, but what took place in nineteen, and I didn't, I've been educated what took place by individuals. I actually went to their house and they educated me what took place in 1959 in the 60s. And it was interesting because being here 54 years, my whole life, I've never heard that. Because it wasn't taught. It wasn't preached. It wasn't, you know, I went through a school and I didn't even, we didn't even know who the, we didn't, we didn't really understand or know who the school was named after. We just thought it was a neat name, Ashby Lee. Because by 1976, I can tell you from experience that that wasn't taught. That wasn't pointed out. So moving on to five years at Stonewall Jackson High School, I can tell you from experience, whatever the contrary, that was not an issue. We didn't make it a point. You heard somebody talk earlier, Mr. Steve Weaver, and he's correct. That's not what we focused on. And you heard earlier by Carolyn Long, there was a Confederate flag in the gym. That's correct. We never understood why it was up there. I kinda wished they would've took it down because it wouldn't have mattered. We didn't see that as racism. That wasn't, we didn't see that as, as a symbol, as a message. No. They could've took it down and we would've, oh, we would've been fine. And it probably would've been a while till we even recognized it in PE class in that old gym. That wasn't our point. We looked out for each other back then. I may get choked up a little bit because you made, I don't know if anybody knows the name Lauren Funkhauser. Well, we looked out after Lauren. Nobody picked her away because we looked out for her. We looked out for one another. And that's what we did. That was the atmosphere at Stonewall Jackson High School. And that's what we did. That was the atmosphere at Stonewall Jackson High School. Lauren was a special ed kid. So, anyway, that wasn't the atmosphere back at Stonewall Jackson High School. I talked to a teacher, coach, that had been at Stonewall Jackson for a long time. He actually told me that after the name was changed, he thought it was interesting that a lot of the kids on his team that were minorities, a lot of Hispanics, they were upset that the name was changed because they felt like they took it, they took something, they took something away from them that they looked up to as far as a leader. And he told me honestly that actually, a lot of the minorities were upset that they took that away from them. Ultimately, what it comes down, so, you know, I guess also to elaborate a little bit, you heard a name earlier, Steve Brown. Well, I can tell you for a fact, when I was a kid, I was younger during that time period when he played quarterback at Stonewall, I looked up to Steve Brown. I was around Steve Brown. Why? Because he was a friend of my oldest brother. And he hung out with that whole group. And I looked up to Steve Brown. He was also in the fire department. I was a junior firefighter, he was a senior firefighter. My best roommate in college, Lucian Roberts, we had a great time together. Lucian was black. So, I've said for decades, you know, as far as that topic, racism is a point or a problem if you make it a point. Now, the reality is, unfortunately, that Colonel Barlow just mentioned on, the problem with American society is, us human beings, and the truth is, it doesn't matter what the name is onside of a school. Unfortunately, there's gonna be a certain amount of racism because of human beings in today's, in this nation's society. And I don't understand that. And I'm sure if there's a problem at that school on the south end of the campus, I'm sure that Mr. Mike Dorman will nip it in the bud and take care of it right away, and Dr. Shepherd will take care of it right away. I feel very confident about that. Ultimately, what it comes down to is, I represent the voice of District Two. And I've gone, and I'm going by actions, which is undisputable. And the actions have always been that District Two, District One have always been ignored. The leadership always found a way to block them, to not make them a part of it. And that was their actions. And like I said, ultimately, out of respect, you know, if this board, myself, the way I was raised, this board believes in accountability, they believe in integrity, ethical, loyalty, honesty, well, if you wanna debate that, then, okay. I don't know how you are. But that may be the difference. So, I'm here to represent the voice, to stand up for the people that, you know, what they want and be heard, be supported. So, anyway, the other thing I wanna put out there, I wanna make it very clear. Whatever happens tonight, there's gonna be a side that's not happy. And that's just how it works. But whatever side is unhappy, I just wanna make it clear that this board will not tolerate any action, any communication in a in a negative or unrespectful way to any school personnel or student, personnel, teacher, principal, superintendent, the school board will not tolerate it. If you have a problem, you address the school board. And we will talk about it and deal with it in a professional manner. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Unless there are any other comments, I'm gonna call the question. Anybody have any further? Then Cheryl, what I'm gonna ask you to do is a rule call vote. Before I ask you to do that, does any member of the school board need to have the motion restated? Okay, so, Cheryl, we're ready for a rule call vote. Thank you.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
Ms. Carlinio?
Yes.
Mr. Gutshahl?
No.
Ms. Rutz?
Yes.
Mr. Rickert?
Yes.
Mr. Barlet?
Yes. The records show that the motion carried five-one. We are now ready for the superintendent's monthly report.
Thank you and good morning.
Good morning.
So, we have several students that are still here tonight, and I expect them to be at school on time tomorrow morning. So, I would like to congratulate our 2024 graduate from all three of our high schools. I am looking forward to seeing their mark on our world as they start the next chapter of their lives. Graduation is Friday and Saturday next week. This is National Teachers Week, and I would like to recognize all of our teachers and staff for the work that they do with our students. Our staff make a world of difference for our students, and we are so appreciative. Attendance was up almost one percent for the month of April from ninety-three point three-four percent last year to ninety-four point two-five percent. Thank you to our teachers, staff, and families for making attendance a priority. Congratulations to our students who won state competitions in FBLA, FCCLA, and Skills USA. We will be recognizing our state first-place winners at a future meeting. Congratulations to the MassNet and Regional Governor's School students who competed at the State Science and Engineering Fair. And congratulations to our Biomedical Science Academy seniors who presented their capstone projects and celebrated their graduation on Monday. Mountain View High School's music and musical Anastasia was amazing. Skyline High, or Stralsburg High School will present their murder mystery musical this weekend. There are music concerts every night this week, and I hope to see some of you there. And good luck to our athletic teams as they wrap up their spring seasons and compete in playoff events. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Appreciate that. School board member comments? Anything, anybody have any? Okay, so I'll, yeah, so I'll just go around the corner.
Just, very, very quickly, I just wanted to say that we've had, the personal committee had their final two meetings this last week, and we met with teachers. We've been listening to them and trying to see ways that we can improve on their retention. So, I think the teachers are really appreciating that we're listening to them, and we're gonna continue doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Rickert?
Mr. Chairman, I just have two things I'd like to talk about with the board. Two ideas I've heard over the past week, one of them was as an incentive for retirees to come back and sub, maybe we could look into covering their insurance premiums or making payments towards that as an incentive. I know we're shorthanded with subs. The second thing that somebody brought up to me, and I thought was a great idea, was we're also short on custodial staff. If parapros or teachers or whoever wanted to stay and help clean the schools in the evening time, maybe we could work something out where they would get a stipend for that until we can hire some more custodians. That's it. And everybody that's still here, thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for staying through the whole thing.
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just have a few things. Congratulations to the, I'm gonna touch on Teacher Appreciation Week. I love visiting schools. I apologize. You know, it's a crazy thing called work, but I wish I could get around more. But I do wanna point out and appreciate the teachers for what they do and honor them. Teacher Appreciation Week. Also, we need to give Mr. Kyle Gutshahl big congratulations. He graduates tomorrow. Congratulations, Kyle. Dukes?
I appreciate that. JMU Dukes. That's the only time I bleed purple, so I'm just gonna put that out there. Congratulations to the graduates of our high schools. Looking forward to continuing to get ready for, we'll have the summer school stuff and other programs going on and getting ready for the next school year. So, it starts quick. It's a fast-moving process.
Oh, I got one more thing. Tomorrow night, Stralsburg plays Central. Go Rams.
The last comment of the night, I do sincerely and honestly hope and pray that out of what has been an excruciating four years for me trying to deal with this issue back and forth, that there is, and I've seen inklings of it the last few weeks, that there is a dedication to work together as we haven't before perhaps, to understand things like racial sensitivities that maybe we haven't really acknowledged yet, and to work together to try to come together as a whole. Because Shenandoah County is a wonderful place full of wonderful people. And I think we oughta, you know, take this Pastor Katie's advice, and I like the prayer, and I think we oughta look to our Lord to help us to be better with each other. So, based on that, I'm gonna close out my comments. And I will, unless there's any objection, adjourn the meeting at, my watch says, twelve thirty-five AM.
I don't know if I'm gonna say that. I think, I think just because it's right after, maybe tomorrow. I just. Five four zero. Three two five. Nine six five six.
Sure, it's five zero.
Eight two oh.
Eight say eight one.